And a couple of things that I wanted to note that his coworkers said about him when he was nominated. Dominic is driven and motivated. He takes constructive criticism well. He's well liked by his coworkers and community members. So Dominic, I just want to recognize you as a great asset to our team. We're thankful for all the hard work that you do and continue to do serving our community, and we're honored to have you alongside of us serving Paradise.
And he writes the most tickets.
Are you sweating?
No, I just see your name on my reports. Yeah, he does a good job.
Yes.
Thanks, Eric. Dominic.
Next up is Amanda Oakley.
Good job.
So Amanda began her career here in Paradise in 2019, April, as a dispatcher. She worked diligently as a dispatch trainee and always had a high drive to learn and to try and excel at her new position. Long before we knew it, the campfire was here and Amanda had just finished training or was finishing training in the, at the campfire, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong.
I was actually the very first person after.
Okay, April 2019. I'm sorry. A year ahead of myself. So Amanda worked remotely in our dispatch center and she never gave up effort and wanted to continue to do whatever she could to serve our community after the fire. And as the department transitioned to not having a dispatch center in-house anymore, Amanda was more than willing to adapt and take on a new role to continue to serve our community, and she was selected to become a community service officer. During the new role, she took on dual duties of the community service officer in assisting with records duties and front counter assistance to our citizens. Amanda's coworkers had a lot of good things to say about her. She's upbeat, always in a positive mood. She's always more than willing to help anyone who needs it. She helps the officers with dispatch duties, required information gathering, is diligent, has a strong work ethic, and is efficient at her work. Lastly, her kindness towards others makes them welcoming and productive. We're grateful to have someone like Amanda on our team, and congratulations on volunteer of the year. I'm gonna get this right. So Lisa started as a volunteer about six years ago in May of 2015, and she's helped the department in so many ways. As a volunteer, she's volunteering at our front counter, assisting the public, and assisting staff with any project that we can put her to use in, and she's always asking for more things to do. Right now, she's stepped up because of a limited number of volunteers and is volunteering twice a week in the front lobby, so we greatly appreciate that. She's helped with the VIPS booth at public events to include Party in the Park and Gold Nugget Days, as well as assisting with our K-9 fundraising. She's also always willing and asking if any of us need help with projects and is more than happy to take on projects with computer systems when she has to do an expanded amount of learning, so we truly appreciate your willingness. Lisa has helped organize all the office supplies in the department and helps keep us stocked up on all the things that needed to be restocked on a monthly and daily basis. Many of Lisa's peers nominated her, and some of the things they had to say was that she always displays poise and openness at the front desk when interacting with the public. She's cheery, upbeat, and is always willing to help with special events. She's efficient and dedicated as a trustworthy volunteer and very reliable. Lisa, thank you for your years of service, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Counsel, Mayor, thank you again for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you, everybody. Great job, and congratulations. Item 1G, financial advisor update. Bet.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. On the teams, what we have is Jim McCourt, who is our financial advisor from Meter Investments.
Good evening.
So he will be giving a financial update, not only, he'll be giving a market update, but also a financial update on the investment of the PG&E funds. So right now, all his purview is over is the PG&E fund and the settlement of those. So at that, I'll turn it over to Jim. Take it away.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you. I spoke on the phone with this group a few months ago, but I don't believe anybody could see me then, so it's good to be with you virtually here. Hopefully, before too long, I'll be able to get out there in person and meet with you. I don't want to take up too much of your time here. I know we have a big agenda tonight, but I do want to give the investment portfolio its proper due here, as it's been a big step for the town to engage in investment advisor, and certainly the PG&E settlement funds is a large amount of money now under the town's stewardship. So we do take this very seriously, and I want to explain to you what we're doing in collaboration with Kevin and his staff, what we've determined is the appropriate strategy for these investment funds here. So I'm gonna bring up a quick presentation to go through just some of the, a general economic and market update and how that relates to what we're doing with the investment portfolio. So hopefully, you can see this up on the screen now.
Yes.
Okay, good. First thing is just to level set where we are with the economy. Certainly, 2020 was a year for the record books. Don't intend to go through every bullet point on this slide, but we certainly saw record swings in GDP and economic growth brought on by the pandemic and then the stimulus that started the recovery over the second half of the year, wild record swings in unemployment and then also initial jobless claims, and then also significant recoveries, again with the stimulus that's happened over the second half of the year. We saw record swings in the stock market, huge declines in the stock market in the springtime in March, and then what we've seen now, and I'm sure many of you have noticed in your personal portfolios, the stock market has really been on a record tear, a recovery brought on by, again, by a lot of the stimulus, also by some optimism of vaccines and whatnot to help spur the economic recovery along. But the main thing that has been a consistent, and as far as what we are dealing with investing these funds that we're talking about for the town, is what's happening in the interest rate environment, and that's really controlled by Federal Reserve monetary policy. And the consistent theme throughout the year since the pandemic really took hold has been the extremely low interest rate environment. The Federal Reserve cut their target federal funds rate to the range of 0% to 0.25% back in March, and at every Fed meeting since then, they have reiterated that stance that they are gonna keep rates very low, meaning monetary policy very accommodative, to try to make it, to try to make it cheap for businesses and for consumers to be able to borrow money to help be as stimulative as they can to the economy during this recovery period here. So they have reiterated that they intend to keep this stance in place for quite some time to come. What we're looking at on this page is what the Federal Reserve releases every other meeting called the dot plot, where it shows their forward guidance, which is basically their anticipated path of interest rates based on the data that they know right now. So what we're looking at here is just each of these dots represents a Fed member's view on where interest rates are going to be going over the next couple of years. This was from their December meeting, so it's still at 2020 at the beginning here. But what we're looking at is through 2021 and 2022 and even into 2023, almost all of the members of the Fed are committed to keeping interest rates extremely low throughout that time. Now, once we get into what is called the longer run here, when we see an economic recovery and the Fed is able to achieve their goals that they're mandated by Congress, rates might eventually get back up into the normal 2.5% range or so. But that longer run is really undefined at this point in time. So what we're trying to do when we manage the portfolio for the town is take into the fact that we are gonna be dealing with very low interest rates for a long time. Now, one more factor that goes into what the Fed is thinking here, a large factor, they have two main mandates from Congress, is one is price stability measured by the level of inflation, and the other is full employment. So you see, there's a couple different ways that you, that the level of the labor market or employment is judged in the economy. But one thing that, one thing we're noting here is the monthly change in non-farm payrolls, so the health of the labor market that we've seen over the course of the last year. And coming out of the financial crisis over a decade ago, the economy was on a streak of over 10 years of consecutive monthly job growth, month over month, positive jobs into the economy. That all changed when the pandemic really hit here in March and April. We lost over a million and a half jobs out of the U.S. economy in March and then almost 21 million jobs in April. So when that timeframe hit and we saw this huge increase in unemployment, that was what spurred the Fed to cut interest rates at that point in time. Now, the different stimulus measures throughout the second half of the year and as the economy has started to at least partially open back up, we've seen some positive job growth here in the second half of 2020. But that progress has really started to slow as we got into the last half of the year, and then even in December, we saw a negative job month again. So the Fed has certainly not gotten to the point where they're comfortable with the status of the labor market. So they're trying to still be very accommodative, stimulative with this monetary policy. So net overall here, we still are about 10 million jobs down in the economy. The headline unemployment rate is now back under 7%, but we're still about double where we were pre-pandemic. So all of this, until we see more significant recovery in the job market here, just leads to the Fed keeping interest rates very, very low. One more graphical illustration of that is just, this is what we call the Treasury yield curve. It's different maturity sectors here of where Treasury bills or notes were paying at different points in time. So this top line is showing where Treasury yields were a year ago at the end of December of 19, starting out here really about 1.5% on very short maturities and then getting, paying more as you get out longer. Then going to September of 20, a quarter ago, the orange line here, how low rates, interest rates got as the Fed cut the very short end here down to zero. And then the blue line is where interest rates were at the end of December of 2020. So they're still extremely low on the front end here, but one thing to note is we have seen a little bit of steepening or increase in rates out longer, and that's brought on by the anticipation really of potentially more fiscal stimulus coming out of Congress. So we would welcome that, really from our perspective and what we're doing with your investment portfolios, to be able to hopefully get some inflationary factor out of that, which could potentially increase some interest rates out here. But overall, with Fed policy remaining very committed to this zero interest rate market, we don't see interest rates up front going anywhere anytime soon. Now, having said all that, what this, how this relates to the investment portfolio for Paradise, for this roughly $219 million from the settlement funds, what we're looking at here is, here's the total book value as of January 31st, just under $220 million. The weighted average maturity, the amount of time that all of these funds are invested for is just under two years, and we would like to even get that out a little bit longer just because we're very confident that interest rates are gonna stay low for an extended period of time. Now, the weighted average yield to maturity is about 0.46%. And then we have this broken down as well by what's in just the securities portfolio, which is what we are managing or what we have invested for the town, and then there's also a portion of the funds that are still in LEAF, which is the California Local Agency Investment Fund run by the State Treasurer's Office of California. And so that is where all of the funds were previous to us coming onboard, and LEAF is a very attractive short-term pool of assets that are a short-term investment for you. But what we want to be doing is locking in some of these longer-term securities to help stabilize the yield because we anticipate LEAF's yield will continue to decline. Even though it's very attractive right now for a short-term investment, it's going to continue to decline over the next couple of years as long as the Fed policy stays in place. So the maturity distribution here on the bottom is where all of these assets are invested currently, and this 119 million is basically all what still remains in LEAF at this point. So you have 55% of your funds maturing within a year, and LEAF is all actually an overnight investment. So this is all actually a one-day investment right here. But everything else that we have invested now is out here longer on the curve. So we have about $100 million at the end of the month. It's actually now about 110 million with some trades we've done this month. But we have about 27% of the portfolio at four to five years, another 14% three to four years. So the idea is that even though there's low interest rates everywhere, we're trying to lock in some of these yields out here that we think that we want to hold in place for the next couple of years while LEAF's yield up front is likely to continue to decline. And so that's, the portfolio yield right here is 0.5%, which is just these assets out here that have been invested in securities. But the LEAF yield that will continue to decline will pull that overall yield down a little bit further. So we want to lock in some of these, some more of these funds out here and get in the interest rate we can right now. Now, having said that, we don't want to just put the whole 200 million and lock it in out for five years right now because at some point, interest rates are going to start to rise again, or at least I hope they do. And so you don't want to have all of your funds tied up in a five-year investment if interest rates were to go a lot higher. So we want to have, we want to get this into a more diversified maturity distribution, which will happen over time as some of these funds start to age, will eventually start to work more of the LEAF funds into the portfolio and have more of a balanced ladder type of portfolio out here, out to five years. I say five years because that's the maximum allowed by California Investment Code and by the town's investment policy. So everything is high-quality fixed income securities or bonds that were invested in with a maximum maturity of five years. And that's broken down up here in the asset allocation in the top right corner, where about 25% of these funds now are invested in government agency securities. That's your Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, Federal Home Loan Bank, Federal Farm Credit Bank. Then you have about 6% in corporate medium-term notes, high-quality corporate bonds, and then 14% of the portfolio right now in municipal securities, which are either California agencies that are issuing debt or different states around the country we're also allowed to invest in per the policy and per the government code. And then still, as I mentioned, 55% of these funds remain in LEAF at this point, but that percentage will continue to decline as we continue to work more of these funds into actual investment securities that we're gonna use to help hold some of that yield in place. And then the idea is that we have a diversified portfolio so that eventually in a couple of years, hopefully as rates start to increase, we have enough funds still maturing up front to be able to reinvest and start capturing higher yields when they start to materialize. But based on Federal Reserve policy and the economic outlook, at this point, we think we're still a ways off from that. So at this point, what we're doing is still being focused on investing more bonds out here in the three to four, four to five-year range. So let me take that off of the screen here. I also, Kevin has probably shared with you, we have not only this report, this is just a summary report, but we do send the town each month an actual detailed investment report of all of the individual securities that are in the portfolio that make up that snapshot that I just showed you, as well as US Bank is actually the custodian of the funds, and so they issue a monthly report as well, so we're able to reconcile all of the dollars to the penny that are invested between our reports, between the town's internal records, and between US Bank. So we are not actually holding any of these securities or any of the funds. US Bank, US Bank Safekeeping Department is. We just work with the broker community to buy the securities and direct where the funds are gonna be placed, and then all the securities settle at US Bank. And then Kevin and his team get transaction summaries or trade tickets every time we make a trade, so he's aware of it, aware of what's gonna be settling at US Bank, and he's able to monitor that as well and ensure that all the funds are properly accounted for and everything is settled with the town's custodian then. I know I'm throwing a lot of new information at you right now, but I'm happy to take any questions just about the program or what we're doing for you or the strategy or anything that pertains to the portfolio as well.
There any questions for Jim? Or for myself? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Enjoy your night.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
No gamestop.
Okay, item 1G, presentation by Ron Sandman Emshire LLC regarding log processing.
Can we have Chamber of Commerce?
I'm sorry?
Chamber of Commerce, get scratched.
They're not here.
Go.
Counsel, Mayor, thank you for having me here. Yes, I can. I'm a professional timber operator, and I acquired my first license in 1989 from Department of Forestry, and I hold the highest California aid license, commercial license issued in the industry and have been in the industry ever since. I was originally called in here right after the fire, and originally, my understanding, and so was the prime contractors that called me in, is that FEMA was gonna take care of not only the debris cleanup when they issued the original invitation for bid, but also the trees. How it ended up after I got here, bought a property because I was gonna be awarded all the tree work that needed to be done, was that FEMA looked like what they did is they took the invitation for bid out of Ventura County after the Thomas Fire and just plugged it in here, and it's entirely different terrain. They allocated, I believe, one tree per parcel that they would cover if it was hazardous to the crews that were doing the debris cleanup. Well, obviously, I was here and I bought a piece of property, so I hung my shingle out to do some work because obviously it needed work. There were trees down everywhere PG&E was just starting in, there were still power lines down, and unfortunately, nobody had confronted the trees yet. Everybody was pretty much looking at the debris and everybody was still in shock. So the first call I got was from a woman who lost her home, and as I arrived at her property, she was in tears and in total grief, and she explained to me how she had a beautiful 2,500-square-foot home and that her insurance company might rebuild a 1,500-square-foot house, but they needed the trees gone. She had significant, she probably had 40 trees on her property, and they said that basically she had to remove these trees before they would fund her rebuild. And she was clutching her purse and her car, and she said, "This is all I own, is my purse and my car." She goes, "I don't," and she got a bid from a contractor, and he bid it at $45,000 to remove her tree, and she's like, "I don't have $45,000 to do this." And then she asked me, she basically said, "Do you just want my lot for $10,000? I can't do this." And I looked at her and I just, oh my God, my heart went out for her. I told her, I go, "Ma'am," I says, "I can't take, I'm not gonna take advantage of you. I don't want your lot for $10,000." I go, "I promise you this, I'm not gonna stop until whoever is responsible for this or whoever, or FEMA, or whoever pays for this, you're not responsible for this." So I made that promise. I couldn't take her money. And then the second family that called me, husband, wife, and their kids, and they were both in tears and in grief, and the kids were trying to go, "I wanna see what's in my room and stay out of the ashes," and they were also in tears, and they said, "Hey, we can't build our house until we get these trees removed and the insurance company's not paying for it." And they asked me if I would take her credit card. I go, you know, I go, "You guys, I can't take your credit card and have you pay high interest to do the tree work." So I went on, and about 100 more clients like that, and I couldn't take their money. And I promised all of them that I would not stop until we got this paid for. So the county, I don't know if you remember or not, early on, they hired a private consulting firm. Dave Wood was in charge of that, and he contacted me, and we went out with him, and he was in overwhelm, as all of us were. So I did the initial tree count of all the dead, diseased, and dying trees, and I also did the adjudication of our canopy, what status it was, how many trees are dead, diseased, and dying, and what species they are, the age, the height, and all of that for him. And then he called me to come in and do a presentation for Cal OES and FEMA and with all my findings. And I did that, and FEMA didn't show up on the initial one, so we went on, and then I was called back and called back. And eventually, at one of my presentations, which unfortunately had to get harder, I basically laid out exactly what was gonna happen, and unfortunately, it's been right to the T, exactly to the specifics that these trees are dying. They are only gonna get worse, and eventually, they're gonna come down, and if we don't take them down, control, Mother Nature's gonna take them down. And I said, "I guarantee all of you, there will be more fatalities if we don't take these trees down timely." And I said, "The blood is gonna be on your hands because there's no one else who can pay for this. The township basically doesn't have any money after this. The county doesn't have any money." I says, "Who's gonna do it? And if this isn't a big enough disaster, I don't know what is." Eventually, the lead attorney, which was on the telecast, said, "Thank you for your presentation. We have to do something about this." And that was the first time, like, that Dave Wood had told me that anybody made any positive statement that the government was gonna come in and help us. And then I went down to Sacramento and did multiple presentations there, which they usually had 15, 20 people around our conference room, and they had me telecast to Washington, D.C. And I basically gave them all the facts, and they wanted to know how many trees, they wanted to know how much it costs, so I gave them what PG&E was paying per contractors, what private people were paying, and basically gave them just an overall view of what we're really confronting. And frankly, they had no idea. Most of them hadn't even been here. They were thinking, you know, like somebody's apple tree or their Colorado blue spruce that they had planted in the front yard, that's what they were dealing with. And so I think I got the message across to them eventually, and then at one of the meetings, I was called off to the side and said, "FEMA has agreed to set the money aside to do this work." But, they said, "We need to know that these trees can be safely taken down because one of the problems is they're rotting, and they're dead, and they're hazardous." And we'll get into that here just a little bit later. So I put on a demonstration for them and brought in some of the most foremost technology on the planet. I brought in a 170-foot grapple boom truck out of Ontario, Canada, and I had 120 government agents show up, and I invited the township, but nobody showed. And basically, what we did is we went up to a 130-foot dead ponderosa pine, and the operator had a remote, and he stood off a couple hundred feet away, and he just brought it up, grabbed the top of the tree like this, it has a hydraulic saw, cut it down, and brought it down and set it right in front of everybody. All of the agencies started cheering when we did that, and when they left that demonstration, one of the top persons from Cal OES told me that they were gonna release the funds. That was way over a year and a half ago. Since then, one of the studies they wanted me to do is how do we mitigate traffic going through town because, you know, the, during the debris cleanup, I mean, there were some fatalities, and I was in Starbucks when a debris truck coming out of Macalia going down Skyway hit a woman and killed her right in front of Starbucks. And that was horrific. And so I tried to work And so, I tried to work out, you know, how we can mitigate the truck traffic running through our town. And incidentally, I live here now and have for over two years now. So, we took a study and we took, if you look at the common way the material is leaving town, it's through the debris trucks, those grapple debris trucks with the high sides. And they're very efficient, but they're, you know, they fill up real fast and you don't have full weight and so on. So, what I did is I chipped five debris trucks and I took those chips and I put them into one chip trailer. And I go, "My God, we could actually, if we chip close to source and process whatever we have to do, close to source, we can mitigate the traffic going through town by up to 80%." And it was like, I mean, it was staggering. So, I presented that to Cal OES. And incidentally, I am appalled that it took so long to do this. And I worked my guts out to try to get this done as fast as we could. But when I sat into those meetings, I can't fault them because it was so complex for them, all the agencies they had to go through, all the different people they had to satisfy. It was staggering. I mean, I just wanted to give up watching that. But anyway, somehow, it got through and we're proceeding on now. But, so, then I came to the city and we made a presentation to the city manager, and I believe you were there, Greg, at the time, of how we can mitigate the traffic. And I believe after that, five, the council had agreed to do five sites in town so that we can process closer to source and mitigate some of the truck traffic and speed up the operation. And so, I went and got two sites approved. It was very expensive and time-consuming. And then, as the invitation for bid finally came out, I called Cal Recycle and I said, "Why aren't my sites in on the bid?" And they said that the city manager had called them and said that she doesn't want any processing in her town. So, they eliminated my sites out of there. Well, you know, I don't care. This is not a moneymaker. But it is something that's good for the county, for the town and for the people here. I don't want to see anybody else get killed. There's, right now, we're working, we have 1/5th of our crews. And you can see how many trucks are going through town now. That's going to, five times here as soon as the weather breaks. And it's going to be a lot of traffic going through town. So, I got one approved on the north end of town, right on the border of the county and the city, and one approved midway so that we can mitigate the traffic coming out of Magalia. Because, you know, all that stuff is coming right through our town. It's tearing up our roads, it's, you know, but it's hazardous more than anything. So, anyway, I was a bit devastated that we weren't going to get that. So, anyway, but since then, we have now started on the debris cleanup and I've been awarded like 25% of the work. But I want to just tell you and emphasize here, if nothing comes of this meeting, what I request from you and anybody that's watching is to just pray for my crews out there. We're risking our lives every day and we're having close calls all the time, every day. These trees, when they come down, they blow up like, and shrapnel goes flying through the air. And anything we can do to speed up production, anything, I mean, even if it's, let's just say that all we did was, we speed up and we got one tree done faster in one day. That might have been the tree that came over a car driving by, or that might have been the tree that went through the roof of a house. And I don't think I need to tell you, I was going to do this PowerPoint presentation, show you all the damage out there and how many trees have already gone over houses and how many gone over. And it was like, all you have to do is just drive around. These trees are busting. The fiber has gone in the trees. There's no integrity left to the wood, so we can't fall them conventionally. You rely, basically, when you fall a tree, on the hinge and that gives you your control. Well, this hinge has to have fiber and has to have holding power, but it has the consistency of popcorn and it just breaks apart. And some of these trees, as we start to fall, just the vibration, the top comes out or limbs come down. And unfortunately, I've already sent two of my crew to the hospital. They're going to be fine. It was not major, but it could be major. So easy. And, you know, we need all your help and all your support that we can get out there. This is, you know, I've been in the business since 89, nothing even holds a candle to how dangerous this job is. These trees are dead, dead, rotten, rotten, dangerous, dangerous, and I don't know how much more I can emphasize that. So, our biggest problem right now is when we take the tree down, we have to clean up the lot and all the debris. And we're putting them in these debris trucks. Well, we're constantly waiting for the, our biggest slowdown is the debris trucks having to go all the way to Orit to unload and then come all the way back. If we had a shorter route, we can get the trees down faster, we can process locally, and then we can speed up production significantly. And that's what I'm asking for on those two sites. Again, this is not a moneymaker, this is a money loser, actually. But it does speed up production and we get the job done faster. And to me, again, one tree faster a day could be that tree that was a fatality. And then, one less truck coming through town could be the one that hit somebody or, you know, I don't think I need to emphasize anymore of that. But, so that's what we're up against. Now, I could put on more trucks, but the problem we're having right now is the monitoring company can't keep ahead of us with enough trees marked. So, we're constantly having to stand down and wait for more trees to get marked. And so consequently, I would have a whole line of trucks waiting. So, I'm trying to minimize my trucks. And so, we have that. So, they're constantly behind. But our production would speed up significantly, you know, I'm not going to give you, no, I don't know, but it would be significant. And then, as far as the actual processing goes, like, the one site that I got on Clark and Bushman, it's back behind PG&E. And I went through the whole gamut of all the permit process. I did SWPs and I did dust control plans and everything else. It was expensive and time-consuming. PG&E set up and didn't have to get one permit. And, you know, so, we're there, we're all set up. I've got the major property owners on both sides, both signed support letters that they want this and if it helps speed up production and getting these trees out. But, again, you know, we've been lucky so far. The big winds that we've had and the storms have been at night. And so, when we come in the morning, go to work and all these trees are over the road, those could have been over the road with cars driving by. And I would like to mitigate that in any way we can. I would like your support. I'd like to have those yards authorized and we would need at least a year to finish up this project. But we have other things, we have the local people that need a place to go. I mean, are we going to send them all to Neal Road and fill up our dump with this slash? Because they don't have any way to process it, so it's going to fill up our dump site. We have a way to process it. We turn it into chips, they go to the biofuel plant, produce electricity. It's a good thing and it gets rid of the material and puts it to use. The timber no longer has merchantable value, can't take it to the mills, they don't want it. So, that's what I'd like to do. And you can't disallow Magalia and other places north of us because it's coming right through your town. If we disallow that, then you still have all those trucks coming through your town and, you know, they're our neighbors. So, the other thing too is, on the sites that I picked, I picked them specifically, you know, we're not in broad view of anything, we're nice tucked away. And, you know, if you look at my permit process, there were all plans of how to do this fast. I don't want to build up the material and let it sit there. I want it to go out as fast as it's coming in. But we could have five trucks come in to a close site, one truck leave, go through town and off the hill. So, I'd like your consideration on that. We also, like today, I turned down tens of thousands of tree seedlings to be planted because we're not ready. And so, that's one of the things I went to work for with the big timber companies have their big nurseries is, and I formed Replant Paradise. And what I ultimately want to do after this cleanup is done is to then give away the trees to the community and the proper trees so we can replant Paradise. And there's no reason everybody should have to pay for these trees. So, I've already got them. And now, what they did is they gave a grant out for all these trees and then they were not ready for them. They didn't, you know, there was a cart before the horse type of thing.
And then, not to interrupt you, but I think it'd be a good time to open up and let counsel ask you some questions.
Absolutely.
So, questions?
I have some questions, yes. Thank you for all of the information. It was helpful to me. We did give out five permits. The ordinance that we passed that allowed those permits to be given out specified that the permits were only for the private program.
That was never...
The ordinance itself says that, that we passed.
I never saw that. That was never discussed with me.
So, we've been told several things since then and we've kind of had some experience with those five parcels, one of which across the street from the CMA church.
Yes.
Started processing and then had to quit. I actually talked to DJ Gomes today about what happened there and why. And what he told me is that he could find no place to take those chips, that he called every processing plant in the North State and no one would take them. So, I'm curious, why would it be any different if we reconstituted that ordinance and gave out and said you could go ahead? Where are those chips going to go? No one would take his.
I have markets for the chips. Verified definite markets. I've been in the business since 89. So, there are markets for it. I don't want to say it publicly right now.
So, why did you not use the permits that you got when you got them?
Because those permits that I got were for this job. And we can extend that. I understand now that we have the Back 40 Grant potentially coming up, that we need a place to take all this and process it. There are markets for the chips.
By you mean this job, you mean the state program?
The FEMA paid for...
The permits were never for the FEMA program.
Well, my understanding in the beginning, that's all they were for because that's all I presented and that's all I knew and nobody informed me any other way that they weren't.
They couldn't be because the ordinance specified that it was only for the private program.
Well, I never saw that. Otherwise, I wouldn't have proceeded and done the permits.
The other thing that...
That wasn't what was represented to me.
Perplexing to me is that Cal OES has told the town that even if we were to change the ordinance so that you could use those parcels for the state program, that they would not use them. They have told that to the town.
That is not my understanding because when I worked with them, they were telling me we want to process as close to source as we can, we want to mitigate the traffic going through Paradise and off the hill.
All I can tell you is that's what they're telling the town.
Okay.
That they would not use them.
And they also did contact us here recently when they heard that this was coming up. And I did not get that from them, so...
How recently did they contact you?
It was about, well, it was close to your last meeting. They contacted all of the prime contractors and they asked them, "Would this help if you could process in town?" And as far as I know, all the primes said yes because they informed me that they've been contacted by Cal OES. And it's a simple matter, just sitting down with them and discussing with them. And if we open up these sites, will you allow it or will you not?
We were, and I just, we were on a tour, I don't, a month ago.
Two weeks. Two weeks. Three weeks.
Three weeks ago with Cal OES. And the question was asked at that point, would they, if we had yards opened up, would they utilize them? And the response that we got from them was, right now, they felt the way it was going with processing in Durham was going just great and they had no intention or no need to change. And that was three weeks ago and I heard it myself from Cal OES while on the tour.
Fair enough. And I don't know who that was from Cal OES. All I know is that Cal OES did contact the prime contractor and they asked, "Would this help?" And as far as I know, at least the prime contractor that I'm working for, they said absolutely. And they came to me and said, "Can you proceed with this because this would really help us?"
What I know about this is there are primarily on this contract, three primary contractors that got awarded the contracts and they're all working with a lot of subs. They're actually doing the tree trimming and cutting down the trees and what have you. One of those prime contractors, Bramford, is aligned and has a contract with Old Durham Wood where they have grinders where they're hauling to there. But other, the other two prime contractors are taking wood to other places. And there are places that have contracts with the prime contractors to take the chips. They can handle all the chips that are going to come out here to the cogem plants. You can't, as a private, which happened to DJ, as a private contractor, you can't take chips in there because they've got more than they need. They're actually making some people pay to bring chips to them. It's just crazy what's going on out there. But the fact that whoever told you about, "Yeah, we're just taking it down," that's one contractor, Bramford, that's using P31, and they have a contract with Old Durham Wood. The other two contractors don't necessarily have that same contract.
Well, this was Cal OES's decision, at least as far as Paradise went. Now, I can't, you know, I can't say whatever they were saying with, no, I heard what you said, Woody, but it's not the contractors that were telling us this.
I understand that, but your Cal OES told you about one contractor?
No.
Not all of them? Okay. The other thing is, are we happy with Cal OES's handling of the tree program?
No.
Okay, then it's like, whatever's going to make the most sense for our community, we should do, not sit here and, you know, they're not telling us the truth anyway. They sat here and told this council before I was on it, "Oh, we're going to have, within two weeks or three weeks, we're going to have 50 crews in your town." They got 10, you know? It's just, I don't trust them and I don't trust the stuff they're telling you, you know, or any of you, or this council at any point. I don't trust them, you know? And I know for a fact, because I know the guy that owns Old Durham Wood and I know that he got in a deal with one of the prime contractors and I know how that's working. So, that's what I mean when Cal OES tells you, "No, they're all going, they're not all going to Old Durham Wood," you know?
They didn't say they were all going, but he said he's, they're, they don't think that it's advantageous for them to have their stuff.
And just like they told Councilman Volan when he asked them on the 50 crews, "Oh, it's economy of scale, oh, we don't have the crew," even when he asked them specifically, all the crews are working over in the bear fire, taking marketable wood because they're getting double dipping, you know? So, it's like, we're not happy with what they're doing, they're lying to us. So, just like we did with some of the other people we're dealing with in this aftermath of this catastrophe, you know, tell them to pounce in, hold them to the fire. You know, if it's in the town's best interest to allow any of the subcontractors that are working for the primaries to put up a yard, chip trucks and send one truck out instead of five, and we have the authority to do that, then we should look at that. We should seriously consider that. I don't care, they're not running us, you know?
Mr. Seck...
And it's Cal Recycle that does it.
If I may respond, Old Durham has a contract with Wheeler Brader in Anderson. I also have a market with them as well. But you don't get those easily. And so, there is a market for the chips. We have homes for them. They will go to a good cause. But also, on the processing here, you're right, we have 1/5th of the crews out. They wanted 50, we have 10 out. And, but, anything that can, if we put 50 crews out there right now, it would be a Chinese fire drill. It would be so dangerous, there would be ambulances going out of here. You cannot do that with these trees. It has to be very concentrated, like, "Nobody puts any pressure on my fallers." They have to concentrate on that tree, figure out how we're going to get it down safely with nobody... with nobody hurt. It is dangerous. So you can't put 50 crews out there. And the guys that I have out are the most experienced out there. So anything we can do to expedite this with the crews that we have needs to be done, in my opinion. And our biggest slowdown right now, our biggest delay is hauling all the way to Horreville with the slash. And if we can get it closer to source, we slow down the traffic, we speed up production with who we have, and it just makes the thing go smoother. All I want, I don't want anybody to get hurt, okay? I want this done fast. I want this town to where we can utilize those trees that we have sitting there right now. There's like 10,000 trees I have available and we have no place to plant them because we're not done yet.
Mr. Sammon, couple quick questions. Did I hear you correctly that you said that you were able to chip five trucks into one truck? So in other words, the five trucks made one truck after the shift?
That's correct.
So that would be a reduction of approximately four trucks on our road then?
Yes.
And then the other question is, if you can maybe talk a little bit about what the processing is, I mean, do you have a big tub grinder and is that what everything's going into? Is that how you're doing your chipping?
Yes, we have a, it's basically a tub grinder. There's a couple of different styles, but basically we take the material in, we grind it, we have chutes up like that. And what my proposal was, and if you, look, I have an extensive plot plan of how the whole processing is with my permit. And you can see that it's very laid out, very methodical. And basically the material comes in, it goes into the grinder, the grinder chute goes right into the back of the truck and it goes out. We don't, I'm not stockpiling chips. There's not going to be a big pile. And we have certain hours that we can work. We have lots of controls that we have to do for dust control and everything else. So it's extensive what we're up against.
One other quick question.
Something on the agenda, public consideration of topics. Sounds like this is also one of the factors. And I decided to talk to the other...
Yeah, it's just an information, right? It's just a report.
I was going to suggest that this isn't really 100% within the purview of the council. It makes no sense for us to do this if Cal OES won't utilize the yards. If they won't use them or let their contractors use them, what difference does it make?
Well, it's my experience.
Could I finish, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I was going to suggest that we ask to agendize this item at the next meeting and in the meantime, we ask staff to clarify with Cal OES what is possible for us to do and what they would be amenable to doing. I mean, it does seem to make some sense, what you're saying, but we need to know that it'll actually be utilized by Cal OES and they won't just tell us too bad, we don't care what you do, which is something we've heard, so.
All right. Well, that has not been my experience.
That would be my suggestion. We bring it back after we have more information that would help us to make some decisions.
Why don't we have Cal OES be at that meeting when he agendizes so they can answer this council directly? You know? I mean, let's get a straight answer once and for all, you know?
Well, I think time is of the essence. And so I think it needs to be done now or not done at all.
Can I just finish my last question?
We can't do it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The other question that I have is, we're kind of focused right now on the Cal OES trees. You're saying that there's also more trees behind that. Can you talk about that a little bit, like after the Cal OES project?
I've got two pilot programs going with USDA right now. And I have 100 people waiting for these. If this goes through, I piloted because they were uncertain of how it works, but they're willing to put up money to take care of the rest of the trees because this is only a fraction of our trees. There's a lot more still has to come down. So if I can get these through, and they're telling me now, I've been a year and a half working on this because they had to revamp the whole thing because this is different. And so they're telling me in the next 30 days, we should have an answer. So if they approve my first two pilots, now we have a USDA program that can fund the rest of the tree cleanup. And not only the tree cleanup, but the replanting as well.
So you're planning on using these yards for that aspect of it too?
Absolutely. And also the private people, I mean, my God, I see them going down the road with these trailers and stuff hanging out and this and that and heading down to, you know, to the Neil Road dump. And it's like, that material goes right into the fill. This would actually put it to use and, you know, it would be something that would be good for the community and also, you know, where are these people going to go with all their slash?
Mr. Mayor, would you consider a motion at this time?
We can't. It's not an action item.
But don't we have to make a motion to put it on the agenda?
No.
That's what I'm trying to do is make an emotion and bring it back and put it on the agenda.
Let me ask one question. Could you survive this operation with just private trees coming through?
I'm not certain yet if I can.
Okay.
So DJ obviously tried and he couldn't do it.
Okay.
I think I talked, I think he said he lost $40,000 his first go around on it and he was out.
Okay.
But I put out, you know, it's about $20,000 in compliance per site. I put that out already. And so if we just stick to private trees, if the USDA programs perhaps, but the thing that I'm concerned about is not necessarily this yard surviving, is to speed up the removal of these trees and get our town cleaned up faster than what we would do if we didn't have it.
Well, every person here is very concerned about speeding up getting these standing trees out of here, trust me.
Yeah. They're hurri, I mean, my God, they're falling down, they're dangerous, that's all.
So do you need a motion to agendize it?
Yes.
I make a...
No, you don't need a motion.
Just to, can I? Cal OES. Cal OES is on the...
Cal OES is on the...
Agenda.
Well, they're on the Teams meeting right now. So I don't know if they'll be ready to make a decision if they would like to use these yards or not.
But we would have to agendize it anyway. We still have to agendize it on a future meeting. We could add it, you know?
Right. You can still agendize it.
We could have a special meeting even if it's not important.
So to me, the agendized item is to bring back the urgency ordinance that allowed tree processing in town, extend it for a specified date and allow the state program to utilize those yards. Is that how I hear the agendized item?
And find out in the meantime...
Right.
What Cal OES's position is on this.
Correct. We will.
Right. What their contractors at the primary.
Do I have consensus?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
With me, and I'm the one that decides.
Mr. Sammon, thank you. I know it's not easy to come up for a group like this and thank you for your time.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Campfire recovery update.
There's no time.
Okay, from trees to trees. So Katie Simmons, Disaster Recovery Director for the Town of Paradise, here with the disaster recovery update. Just looking really quickly at hazard tree removal projects and advocacy and emergency management with the corrective action plan moving forward. We do have Cole Glennwright on the phone. He is with Cal OES, Incident Commander, on government hazard tree removal. So we'll go ahead and pull him up when we get to that slide. Good news on the private hazard tree removal, 97% of properties enrolled in the private program are complete. We have 3% sitting at incomplete, which is 111 incomplete properties with the unenrolled at 834. We have properties totaling 945 at risk for abatement. So we did hear in the last presentation, there are several phases of tree removal. So as we finish the private program and the government program, we move into abatement and from abatement into category four tree removal if we are granted those funds. On the government hazard tree removal side, 95% of properties enrolled have been assessed. 24% of trees assessed have been felled. So a couple of weeks ago, the town did issue a letter to Cal OES making some very specific requests of them for the government hazard tree removal program. The first of which was to dedicate all available resources in the town to the removal of life safety trees that have been reported and then maintain dedicated crews to remove those life safety trees as they continue to be reported in wind and weather events. That the state increased crews in town to maximum allowable number by contract and Cole is going to address these momentarily. The state commit to publishing weekly statistics on tree removal, which they have agreed to. So we're going to be issuing joint press releases with a dashboard of progress to the public along with some success stories. I can say one of the success stories last week was the removal of hazard trees threatening the rebuild of Paradise Community Village. So the superintendent on their construction crew was thrilled, so that was, we were happy to see progress made there. We asked for the state to commit to monthly Q and A with the town council at council meetings, so that is why Cole is joining us this evening. We asked that the state create an email group to track the questions of the town. And essentially what we're doing is just making sure we have a really good feedback loop to make sure we're tracking on all of these issues. Deputy Director Burris, who is meeting with us on these requests, did agree to a weekly meeting. And so those are being scheduled for Fridays going forward. We asked that the state allow the town to see daily work packages as far out as they have been scheduled, and this is occurring through Public Works. We have asked that the state remove barcoded trees that have broken in half or fallen completely over as they would, as they would if the trees were still standing. And we asked that all state hazard tree removal vehicles and personnel be clearly marked and credentialed as part of the program. So some of these requests came from public sentiment regarding making sure the tree crews were identifiable out in public. Some of these requests came from needing some additional transparency and public information from Cal OES and Cal Recycle specifically. And some of the requests are really coming from those of us who are working very closely with the public on the removal of the life safety trees and wanting to make sure that those are prioritized. So I'm going to go ahead and have Cole, if we can pull him up on Teams. Cole Glennwright was speaking with us at the last council meeting. He's Incident Commander on the Hazard Tree Removal Program. And Cole, I think as a first step, let's go ahead and have you address the request that the town made specifically on use of resources for life safety trees. And then I know you had an additional update to provide, so I'll go ahead and let you take it from there.
Thank you, Katie. Good evening, our members. Cole Glennwright, Calفرن governor's office of emergency services. So I believe there was some conversation with town leadership, including my deputy director, regarding the imminent safety threat trees. Those are obviously a significant concern to us, as I know they are to you. The state has agreed to prioritize removal of those trees and our planning section is doing that presently. So those trees are accounted for in our system, prioritized, and crews are getting on those as priority items. So we're looking forward to seeing those numbers come down. I know our deputy director has made commitments to see the existing list down in 30 days and we are positioned to do so. Katie, I can just provide kind of some general other updates and then I think we both wanted to kind of speak on public information elements because I know that's critical. We addressed earlier, resourcing. Currently, we have 13 felling crews in the Town of Paradise. Tomorrow, we'll be adding two additional crews, one in East Paradise and one in West Paradise. To give a little more flavor to that, some of the specialized equipment we have working in the town, we have two Senobogans, which are heavy equipment, mechanical tree removal. We also have one rough terrain crane that's allowing us to access some of the more difficult trees. On the support resources side, from our monitoring consultant, Arcatis, we have 36 arborists, 20 archaeologists and 23 biologists helping us comply with those environmental requirements. To drop down to the public information piece, we are committed to working with the town to push out information through both existing and through new channels to ensure consistent communication. The state is committed to work with town and county leadership and public information on collaborating on a possible public meeting in the future. We've had great success with those and other events and earlier in this event, as I'm sure you're all aware. And the state does provide daily progress statistics and will be working, as Katie mentioned, to ensure those are communicated in an appropriate manner to the appropriate audiences and tailoring those as needed. If there's metrics that are of specific interest to town leadership or the general public, we'll be providing those. So that's at a high level where we are. Katie, I'll turn it back to you if we want to have any other specific questions.
Thanks, Cole. So I guess we'll go ahead and pause there in the presentation to have questions.
So of the life safety trees that supposedly all the crews are going to be dedicated to, how many have we identified down and how many have you taken down?
So for the life safety trees, those are priorities within our system. The crews track those and as they build their schedules, they build their schedules around those priorities. I don't have the specific number for your council member.
Okay, I would like to know that because I was told at one point there were 80.
That's a statistic I could get back to Katie if you're interested.
Okay. Well, this is the kind of information that we've been wanting all along, you know, that's lacking. And I don't know, Katie, did you get the picture I sent you of a cleanup project they did?
Yes, I did.
And did Cole see that and did OES see that? That's what's being left behind.
Right. I have not seen a response from Cole or Brett on that email, but we can research.
I got a lot of questions for you, Cole. I'd be glad to meet with you one-on-one.
So one of the things we wanted to do was to reschedule those field visits that we had scheduled for, I believe it was Councilmember Boland, Vice Mayor Jones and Councilmember Colleton.
That's not the point, Katie. The point is, he's on this meeting. The thing is, we were told by these demands we put on them, that they were going to make the life safety trees a priority. Every crew is going to be dedicated to it. So we got three days of rain, so they all stopped work. Okay, so now they started work again and here we are at our regular monthly meeting and he can't tell me how many trees there are in that program and how many have been taken down. You know, that's information we need to know because the people that are living in homes that are being threatened by those trees would like to get some idea. And so we need to know what we can tell them. You know, you're on the schedule, maybe next week, maybe next month. You know, I need to have that information.
Yes, those are specifically the questions that we've asked Cal OES and Cole is aware on the life safety tree spreadsheet that we're all looking at and managing. We have asked that the 80-plus parcels that have been identified to have life safety trees do have that detail because our tree advocates are making those calls to keep those property owners updated.
We have that detail?
We are asking for additional information from Cal OES to help us understand when those parcels will be scheduled for felling so that we can then communicate that to the property owners. And at this time, that's the specific information that's missing. So our tree advocates are making pretty routine calls to those on the life safety list, letting them know when they've been evaluated, when the properties were last visited, how they're scheduled for felling. But we need that very specific information, I agree with you, to say, your property will be cleared on this date, and that's the information we don't have.
And Katie?
Yep.
I know we went from 86 properties to, I believe, 150.
And that would include the county.
Okay, that is, that does include the county.
Yep. So the IST list that we're managing, that Cal OES actually hosts and that we take a look at for information and we add information to, that includes the county IST trees as well as the towns. And I think ours was around 80 the last time we talked.
And, okay, but when we're having the conversations with Cal OES, I mean, I'm confused then because Ryan jumped from 86 to 150, never was that mentioned, county. And he mentioned a phone number that we don't apparently have to add to it. And that's how he said we got from 86 to 150.
Yeah, so...
I mean, that's what he said. And we've, again, we have to answer to our citizens. And when you're sleeping in your living room because you're afraid to sleep in your bedroom, we have to do a better job. And I'm not seeing a whole lot of improvement from our first conference call. And we've asked for more crews and I mean, to me, going from 12 crews to 14 crews isn't exactly what I was looking for. And it's, you know, it's just a matter of time. We've got to find a way to, we were told originally 50 crews. Maybe we can't have 50 crews, so let's get 30. But 14 or 12 to 14 to me is not really an increase in numbers and we got to do better.
I just want to assure you that every comment I've heard tonight has been sent in writing specifically to Cole and Brett. Kevin has copied on all of this correspondence regarding the material impacts to folks who are living in our life safety trees, occupied structures that are threatened by trees, the town's desire to see those trees come down first and only before the rest of the properties are cleared. Cole, if you want to address the tree crew number, there has been a lot of interest in the town in seeing that number rise to the contractual level that is stated between Cal OES and those tree contractors. Can you address that? Can you address that for the council tonight?
Yeah, absolutely, Katie. So, the, the tree resourcing has a couple components to it. Really what we balance is production and capacity for production with our overall programmatic goals, which are safety, federal eligibility, regulatory compliance. So, as we add crews, and forgive me if I give the impression that two additional crews was the extent of our ramp up, we do this on an incremental cycle to ensure that as we add resources and as we expand the incident, we don't sacrifice our success in those three priority areas. Those are priorities that, you know, we've all agreed on, on the onset, are things that are important to us. I think safety is something we all agree on. Federal eligibility is important to both of us to ensure that, you know, FEMA is able to pick up the tab, and regulatory compliance supports our ability to be reimbursed and to be, you know, effective stewards of the environment here. So, that's what we look at. The contract capacity has been stated a few times here. Whether or not we get to that full level will depend on how successful we are at maintaining positive metrics in those other areas while increasing. So, that's what the team looks at. It's essentially an agile process where we add crews, we evaluate if we're still being successful, then we go back and we increase. So, that's the, you know, as mentioned, the assessment line of effort, which has been ongoing for several months, is very close to completion. It's at completion. And so, we're now able to look, you know, 100% at the pre-felling and removal lines of effort and perform that ramp up as we go forward. So, I, I think there's an obvious, you know, interest, as there is on my team, to see those production numbers increase and those tree numbers increase. And I don't think there's, you know, any discrepancy there. We're not artificially trying to suppress that number, other than to ensure that we maintain success in those other priority areas. Did that answer the question, Katie?
Go ahead.
I'm confused. So, we're talking now about priority for life safety trees, which we had talked about before, but we also had talked about priority for trees surrounding existing and rebuilt homes. I'm in a rebuilt home. I'm hearing from residents who are in rebuilt homes or existing homes that there are no tree crews anywhere around their houses. And so, I called, well, I actually had somebody from the tree program across the street from my house looking at some trees that are tall enough to hit my house the other day, and when I went outside to see who they were, if they were going to start cutting trees, he said, no, they were the safety people. They were just assessing safety. But he gave me the phone number of someone who he called the project scheduling liaison. And when I called that number, the young woman who answered the phone had no idea about any priority for standing or rebuilt homes. So, what happened to that?
So, the life safety trees that we're talking about do include rebuilt homes, standing structures that survived the fire, occupied RVs, any, so a life safety tree is essentially any tree that's threatening the life of someone who's living under it or rebuilding under it or anything like that.
So, how do you get on that list? Because most people do not know about that. They're just sitting there waiting, thinking that existing homes are a priority. They have a map that has all the existing homes on it. Shouldn't they all be on the list?
Yep.
This woman that I talked to, she didn't have my address.
You're particularly, you're specifically correct. That was an original priority set. It remains a priority for the project. As this imminent safety threat tree universe has expanded and the priority on that has grown, that's now our highest priority. But we do continue to use the existing data in a tree fresh tree at regular intervals for those other priorities in there, including and notably the rebuilt homes, building permits. We'd be happy to, Katie and I can loop back and confirm, there's not a gap in the data there as to why you aren't seeing progress there. You know, the way these operations work is we do look for a concentration of work, and then we evaluate that concentration of work against others based on the number of priorities, but we don't move crews from, you know, one site, one site, one site across, because we are trying to keep them efficient. I mean, we do need to, you know, ensure that they're productive overall.
So, that, he just very well explained the whole system right there. And I, and I appreciate your honesty, Cole. That's, that was the most honest answer I've heard in a long time, because it's about efficiency and about them making money and saving money. It's not about the lives of our people and our homes. And that, that's exactly, exactly what's going on right now. So, we can stand in our head, we can do whatever we want to do, but they're, they're out to make, to save as many dollars as they can. We're concerned about people's lives, they're concerned about dollars. And his honesty right there was, is what it is.
But that's not okay.
And the other thing, Cole.
Doesn't matter, it's what it's going to be.
You can go, everything that you tell us here tonight, or that Ryan tells us, we can go out and your crews have no clue about what you've told us. So, it's like, what, you know, what, what's going on? I mean, I'm still running into people and, and that are complaining about, your crews are telling them as trees fall, if they've got a blue dot tough, they're not coming back and picking it up. And we've gone over this and over it and over it. Well, somehow your, your crews have no clue. So, I don't know where the miscommunication is, or if it is miscommunication, but we need to fix it.
So, a couple items to respond there. Perhaps efficiency is the incorrect word there. The state doesn't, it's not about money, because we play, we have a flat rate per tree. So, when we look at efficiency, we look at productivity. We want to take down as many of these hazardous trees as quickly as we can, because all of them, if they have a blue dot and arborist has determined, do pose a threat. When we talk about ensuring crews are productive, that's what we mean, is that we want to make this, deliver this project for you as quickly as we possibly can. So, there's no fiscal element in here. The state has a flat rate contract here, and we think that's, you know, an effective way to manage it. Certainly, the contractor is incentivized to take down as many trees as possible, and we think that incentive works in, in the government's favor, because we'd like them to be productive. But I, you know, I want to draw a distinction there, this isn't an hourly contract or anything like that. So, I hope that adds a little bit of clarity there.
Yeah, but Cole, you mentioned efficiency, okay? And the problem is, like, the trees have already been assessed, you got the blue dot, they got the barcode, and, and we know they're around a house, they're next to Jody's house or my house. Okay, so now, before you send these crews that we've now supposedly prioritized to go cut those trees first, no, we're going to send another assessment team out. Oh gee, that tree doesn't threaten the house, it only threatens the garage, no life safety. I mean, why are we reassessing what you've already assessed? And, I mean, that's not efficient. If, if it's already been tagged, your arborists have looked at it, your mappers have mapped it, your Indian people have made sure there's no artifacts, your safety people have come and looked at. Why aren't the crews out there cutting it?
So, it's a priority in our system, and they, they will see crews out there. I think you're referring to the imminent safety threat trees, where we receive a specific call about a tree, and so we do ask our operations team to go out and perform an additional evaluation on that. And that's to determine, to advance it as it to that highest priority class, right? So, it's in response to a specific request from a constituent, from local government.
You guys know, you guys have a map of, on your little laptops that you guys did, you have maps of every tree you've tagged and put a barcode on. By GPS, you know where they all are, and you have a map that shows where every existing structure is. You don't need to send somebody out there to assess it, unless it's a brand-new tree that hasn't been assessed, that's a different deal. But the ones that you already know about, and you know are next to a house, you can look at your data, your electronic documentation that you have to do, and go cut it down, scheduling.
Absolutely, and that is the process. But if there are trees that a constituent specifically calls in on, we will respond out to, to check those, and if it's something that wasn't in our system, we want to account for that, right? I think that's the, the right thing to do, is to be responsive to the community in that way, not just say, we have it scheduled, we have it in the system. I'd be happy to speak after with Katie on that, if there's a way to refine that process, but that's the process we have to take forward.
And, Councilman Ryan, question?
Just a couple quick ones. On the list that we have here in front of us, which were the requests that were on January 25th, where are we with these? Because a lot of them seem to be what we're talking about now, like increasing crews, you know, where are we with the barcoded trees that have fallen? Have those items been resolved?
So, Katie, I think we talked through a few of those. I don't know if there are specific ones. We talked about crew numbers.
I think the barcoded trees is probably helpful. I think the last time we talked, it was the intention of the state to work with the contractors on making sure barcoded trees that had broken in half or fallen of their own accord were still removed as they would if they were still standing.
Yeah, that's correct. That is the state's intent, and we're continuing to develop a contract solution for that. So, that, that hasn't changed.
So, if we were to knock off this list, most everything on, on this list still remains open? Is that what I'm understanding, that we don't have any set answers for anything?
I would say we have set answers for, so he's addressing the question on life safety trees, the crews as well. We are publishing weekly statistics starting next week and weekly update. He is here as part of the monthly Q and A with town council. We are meeting weekly with Deputy Director Burris, which addresses number five. We are seeing the daily work packages as far as they've been scheduled, that is occurring through Public Works. He just answered the barcoded question. And then number eight, I mean, that's an issue that we continue to bring up, and I think it's discussed on almost every Tree Tactics call, that the state continues to reiterate to the contractors who are out in the field that they be marked and credentialed.
Yeah, they got little bitty, they got little bitty placards sitting in the windshield of their private cars, you can't tell who's who. And on one job where they went on private property and cut a live cedar tree down, they refused to identify themselves, and that was a subcontractor there. What about, what's the possibility of the council being able to be included on this email group so that we can have, know whatever the state administrator, the head guy, is talking about?
So, on number five, what we decided was to carry on with the weekly meetings with Deputy Director Burris, that a couple, two council members have been attending, the mayor and Councilmember Bolin, if I'm, if I'm correct on that. So, we're going to continue meeting with him weekly on the program concerns of the council related to administration. And then on number one, we did hear confirmation from Deputy Director Burris last Friday that the state would have all of the life safety trees that are currently on the list down in 30 days. So, that was his commitment to us. It sort of addressed some of the equipment issues, I think, that CalOES has brought up in terms of some issues with removing those trees. So, that is a commitment Deputy Director Burris did make on our call.
And for that, we said, please get them down, and if it means that the logs stay there.
Yep.
For a week or two weeks. So, if you see logs that are staying there, we want the, we want the threat down.
We just want them down.
Threat down, and we'll take care of getting it, clearing it later. So, that was part of it.
So, since we can't, by Brown Act, we can't all apparently be on that email group. Can we get updates weekly on whatever happened there? Is that legal? You know, I mean, just a summary, so that we, do we know that kind of information? Okay. That's a great, that would be helpful.
And, and the other thing that I'm concerned about is, we went from having our 86 lots done in seven days to evidently the county adding lots, which I thought we had crews in Paradise and they had crews in the county. But because of that, we went from seven days to 30 days. We can't extend it again. I, I mean, I, after our first meeting with, with Ryan, I'm telling people seven days, now I'm telling them 30. And believe me, when you're sleeping in your living room and you're worried about somebody getting killed because of a tree, that's not news you want to hear, and that's not news I like to deliver. And especially when I tell them what I am told and I believe to be correct, and it isn't, because it doesn't reflect good in me, and I don't like not looking good as well, especially when it's no control of, of ours. So, we need to stick with whatever we're, we're telling. Either that, or we need a number where we can give our, our people, so they can call you guys and you can, you can call them.
I have suggested that. I have suggested that.
And, and if it doesn't happen, you know, you can tell them why it's not happening, because it, it's just making us look like idiots.
So, I want to go back to your point about the contractors, though. The Town of Paradise did issue this letter requesting all available resources in the town be dedicated to life safety trees in the town, which I'm, I'm going to sort of explain the priority pyramid, because I think we need to clarify that really quickly. But the, that means that contractors that are contracted to work in the Town of Paradise, we want those crews working on our life safety trees. The county has made the same request, but to dedicate their crews to work on their life safety trees, which are less than the town's. So, our request and their request do not impact each other.
But it changed the time, Katie. We went from seven days to 30 days.
Yeah, I don't, I actually don't.
It wasn't that.
Don't recall that, yeah.
That's just, that's the inefficiency of CalOES.
No, that's.
Yeah, it is.
So, I want to go back to Vice Mayor Jones' question, though, about priorities, and I'm, I'm sort of envisioning, and we can, you know, we can talk about all this content that we're developing with the PIO. The life safety trees are, are trees that have been reported to during wind events, kind of crack and look like they're going to fall on a house. The next priority is the fact that the CalOES has already been sent all the standing structure addresses, all the active building permits, all the rebuilt homes. All of that data continues to go to CalOES from the town and the county regularly, so that's sort of the next priority. And then below that, of course, we have trees that are threatening construction sites and all of that, and, and if they have a life safety tree, they get bumped up to the top. And that is what happens in that second evaluation, when we report a life safety tree. And then underneath that, you have all the rest of the trees, which are hazardous and probably threaten other things in town that we know we need to get down in the program. So, I just kind of wanted to describe that a little bit, that the life safety tip of the pyramid was not defined when we initially set program priorities, because I think there wasn't that anticipation necessarily, until we started to see wind and weather, and then boom, those life safety trees, that list was created and we.
Cole, how many trees to your 14 crews, or how many trees are they able to take down a day? If everybody's working on a sunny day, no rain, how many trees can all your crews combined take down?
In the town, we see between 200 and 300 trees down on a good day.
A what?
200 and 300 daily.
200 a day?
Between 200 and 300 daily.
Huh? It's hard to understand with the outgoing. Two to 300 a day?
Just a quick question. You, you talked about the 30 days. When did that start?
Next week.
Last Friday.
Next week. Where?
So, the 30 days have not started yet?
Huh?
Well, and March 1st.
He said March 1st.
Okay.
It starts March 1st or July?
And by March 1st.
Oh, gee, that's in two weeks. 30 days in two weeks.
Katie, with the priorities that you mentioned, what really concerned me is that when I talked to this woman who was supposedly the project scheduling liaison, she didn't know anything about those priorities.
So, Cole, can you answer that question? Vice Mayor Jones spoke with someone who was a project scheduler and was not aware of or versed in the project's priorities?
She knew about the life safety trees, but not about any of the other priorities.
Like active building permits and standing structures?
Yes.
Yeah, I can address that. So, we'd be happy to circle up after and figure out who specifically you spoke with. I'm presuming it's someone at our management consultant, Arcatis. But I, I speak with our planning and our scheduling team daily, and I can confirm that the people who make decisions on that are well aware of the priorities that Katie nicely outlined there. So, we can definitely circle back with our management consultant and see if there's someone on the phones that needs to better understand that. We'd be happy to take that back.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, I, yes.
Hurry.
Hurry, okay. Well, thank you, Cole, for joining us. We'll see you next month for the council meeting.
Thank you, Cole.
We, we look forward to our weekly calls, and I just want to reassure the council that everything said tonight has been sent to CalOES in writing, it has been communicated to Deputy Director Burris. We did an excellent job reiterating our concerns tonight, so we just continue to press on this project to be very successful, obviously, for the town and as, as quick as possible.
Thank you, Cole.
Okay. Thank you, Cole. We can go back to my slides. So, I will just speed right along then. Wanted to just let you know that hazard mitigation projects are coming to fruition with some design and scoping funding coming for reseeding residential ignition resistant program, our replacement generators, those are on your consent calendar. The storm drain master plan was approved. We're waiting for, to see if we receive construction funding for the early warning system. We're waiting for, to see if we receive construction funding for the early warning system. Category four tree removal has been bundled with abatement contracting with FEMA and Cal OES. So we are continuing to press on those funds becoming available as quickly as possible.
I'm sorry, do you know the timeframe it will take for abatement? Is that set yet?
No. So we're having probably two to three times a week conversations on abatement. We are working with the town attorneys on making some revision to our ordinance to make sure that it aligns with the county's ordinance, so that if we are able to have some of the contracting done through the state for tree felling, tribal monitoring, biology, archaeology, all of the environmental pieces that are required for federally funded tree removal, that they have now done and hopefully know how to procure more, more quickly. We are working with the county on making sure those contracts can be set up, because if we add that procurement process to the, to the staff or to the capacity we have on, on staff, we're very concerned about that.
So, I'm sorry, I know you're trying to.
Timeline.
But, so we have to go through the court system. We have to get that abatement. That allows us on the property to start those things you just talked about.
Yes, so we, our, our town attorney is drafting the abatement process. And we can actually send the county's abatement process out because we're looking to really follow that. It will require abatement notices be sent that the, the court is obviously notified, we're using roadside assessment data to set up that abatement, those abatement proceedings. Then there is an opportunity for the property owner to, to respond. We might have to get an inspection warrant on the unenrolled properties to make sure we can identify how many hazard trees, and then they'll move through the abatement process. So it's a multi-step process. We have 945 properties.
It's going to take a few months.
It's going to take.
It's going to take a while.
Yeah, it's going to take a while.
Easily.
Easily. Yep.
It's not easy.
We are, we are in the process. Moving.
Yeah. I know you are.
We are getting there. We're hoping by February.
Yes, that's our goal. We're hoping by February 18th, special council meeting to have those ordinance revisions to the council so that we can make those changes needed to the ordinance, get the notices out to start the abatement proceedings on the 945 properties, and then, you know, essentially work with the state on the contracting for tree felling, hopefully using the contracts that are already in place ideally. But with 945 properties, we see that, those abatement proceedings concluding probably after the government has a tree removal.
And then possibly even the category four trees would be in that also?
Uh, category four trees would occur probably after abatement. So hazard mitigation funds don't become available until FEMA PA projects are closed. So I know, we are, we are working on, I mean, truly, truly, multiple times a day on abatement in category four.
I know you are. And I'm not, I'm not picking at you. I'm just trying to get my head a timeline now. And I know there isn't one yet, but, so that category four would be after the abatement and the, and the finalization of that. So this could be, I mean, this could be next winter again on these back 40 trees.
Yep.
I'll just chime in here. On the category four, we did have a meeting with FEMA, Cal OES about this hazard mitigation grant for these category four trees.
And I thought they said they were moving that up.
So we thought they were moving it up too. They tried to poke holes into where we were in the application process. So it was enlightening to see where they felt we were versus where we thought we were. So the one positive is now it's on their radar. So we are moving that forward as quickly as possible so that we can get those funds on the street, so those category four trees can come down and those funds are available for those individuals. When, when will that happen? We, we don't know yet. We don't have a firm timeline on that. We, it could happen at the same time as abatement. We don't know that. We're hoping for that because we, we did reiterate, people are getting tired of hearing trees. People are tired of enrolling. People are getting to the, we're wearing them down. So we need to get them so that these trees are coming down as quickly as possible. So we are working on that as a team internally, pushing that forward.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Are there any of these abatement trees that are also life-saving trees?
Yep. So we are also talking about how to handle the life safety component of non-enrolled trees, which is essentially what we're left with in abatement.
So obviously, we are prioritizing those.
Yep. So we're prioritizing the conversation. I have.
But there are, there are many of those.
Yep, there are many. So if we have, if we have, I think it's, what, 934 minus 111. So we have about 850 properties that have not enrolled at all. We are still working with our tree advocates to make sure we're reaching out to those properties. We, we may get forwarding addresses in some cases. We reach back out. The county ROE center is doing a lot. But with the 945 potentially abatable properties, we're probably looking at life safety issues as well. So we are already internally preparing how we're going to handle this, obviously with, not only with PR, but with resources. And so to go back to the category four, yep.
Sorry, have we thought about trying to maybe go straight to a judge to get some type of a injunction or permission to say, hey, if these are life-saving trees, the town can take these trees?
That's a town attorney question. Do you want to approach the microphone?
Uh.
Oh, microphone?
Better go to the microphone.
If a tree were brought to the town's attention, that needed some kind of immediate injunctive relief. That, that would have to be addressed on a case-by-case basis. On a broader approach here, the town has decided to take a parallel action with the county. Town had a more summary abatement process set up in its code where notice was given and people had to request a hearing. If they didn't request a hearing, we were going to go in and do the trees. That created some differences with the, the county's statutory scheme for doing it, where the county wanted and planned on scheduling a hearing for everyone. A hearing would be scheduled, and those people would either show up or not show up.
That makes sense.
And depending on the outcome of that hearing, the next action would be taken.
Then we could go take the tree.
Yeah, after there's a determination.
If they didn't show up, after they.
After a period of time.
But, but, so, so again, it was decided that for a number of reasons, it was best to be on a parallel track and all be doing the same thing so that the judges, when they see these things coming through in stacks, are processing things in accordance with the same procedures and requests. So we're coordinating those efforts. It's also, we have to keep in mind, and I know everybody here knows this as well or better than I, that we're talking about a huge number of trees and a huge number of people. And the abatement process is such that when you get the authority to abate the nuisance or the problem and go out and cut down the tree, there's a fuse, a time limit within which you have to cut that tree down. Okay? And so now we're talking about a list, you know, how many, how many tree cutters are there? You know, we've got, all I'm hearing is trees and, and this guy wants his log yard and, you know. So there's just a lot of factors here that we're trying to pull together and put into a, you know, fit the puzzle together that says, okay, this is going to work. And how, how long of an abatement process can we ask the court for? Statutory period is 15 to 30 days to abate the nuisance. We have, we have concerns that, you know, we go get 20 or 30 granted abatement actions and it's raining for 15 of those.
So then it just wasted a whole time.
There's a lot of nuances here that you're just going to, that we all have to just bear with and address and implement as best we can. That's what I can say.
But isn't it possible to like, to ask the courts for like, in light of this disaster? Because like what they're doing now, from our experience over in, in Berry Creek, they're doing it all. They're taking all the dead trees and all the debris. They're doing it all.
The short answer is that we can ask the court for anything, but I can't guarantee you what the court's response is going to be.
Okay.
And the court feels constrained to act within their own statutory scheme about what the statute says that you're supposed to do under this statute or that statute. And we might be able to, to create a reasonable request and construct a reasonable request that for reasons X, Y, Z, we're asking you to go beyond that. And here's why it's justified and come up with a plausible reason why that's justified. But we can't give you the outcome before we get through the procedure and make those applications.
One thing to think about is, is there a way of doing something like a state of emergency that we declare for the town and the county declares at the same time? And we, we together try and do, make something move? I, we don't need to debate that now.
Yeah, and, and we can't. But we are bringing back an amended emergency ordinance and, and, and we can talk about that some more.
Okay.
The, the amendment in the ordinance is not that significant. It, it, it's really just to track the abatement portion of the emergency ordinance to revise it so that it tracks the county's abatement procedure.
Okay. All right.
Just ask Aaron Rodgers for the money.
But you, you could, we still probably could go to a judge and get an adjudication for these life safety trees. We'd have to make a very good argument to get a.
Here's the deal, and it's, it's, it's a deeper dive than we can probably do here. But I can tell you that if there was a tree leaning over somebody's house, okay, and somebody came to me and said, the tree's leaning over someone's house, what should I do? I would say cut it down before I went to the judge. So unfortunately, or fortunately, whatever it is, it's a factually intensive discussion because saving lives is more important than saving somebody's tree, right? But if you make the, and, and if you make the wrong decision, you could get sued, right? The property owner says, well, you thought it was going to fall on your house, but it's been leaning for the last seven years. Here's the picture. It wasn't leaning anywhere. So we're forced with evaluating the nuances of all this stuff and trying to implement a pie that is acceptable to serve for dinner, if you will.
Yes. Only you're going to make it come up with this stuff. I'm telling you, man, this is unbelievable.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate your patience with all of it, yeah.
No, thank you for your work.
We will have a full abatement discussion.
Katie, I have a question that is not about the tree removal.
Oh, wow.
It has to do with the reseeding program.
Yes.
I'm just a little concerned about what Mr. Sandeman had to say about his own reseeding program and conflicts that it might have with the program that we're trying to stand up and what trees might be recommended in giving out free trees that might not be the ones we want to have planted. So is, is it possible to have someone coordinate with him and find out what he's doing?
I would be happy to coordinate with him. I'm aware of the grant-funded project that is giving out. I'm trying to remember the types of trees, and I let them know we were going into reseeding. CAL FIRE was also copied on that email. So I will try to coordinate all of that. The reseeding program through hazard mitigation is specifically for reseeding the right-of-way and public parks, so public property. But the reseeding will generate education that we can share with property owners in terms of what is recommended to be planted in Paradise post-fire.
And where?
And where. Exactly for erosion control.
And plant.
So they're different.
Is that the same program that we talked about, Kevin, that you said?
Yeah, I was mistaken. I thought that was private.
It's public only.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yes. But I would be happy, I am inserting myself in all of those conversations to make sure that we are coordinating on, on that.
Great.
Yep. Okay. And then, so just to wrap up trees, February 18th, we'll have a full conversation on abatement and the process and the amended ordinance that the council can take a look at so we can move forward with that process. Okay, so just really quickly, on the federal advocacy platform, we are working with the Ferguson Group on identifying a couple of key priorities that she feels will be palatable to our, our, the, the federal team. So I will be in touch probably through Kevin on scheduling some meetings with staff or elected officials in Washington DC with our council members on our priorities. And then ending with emergency operations and planning, so we did have.
Before you go on.
Oh, yes, please.
It's not federal advocacy, but advocacy. We talked about what the Department of Forestry is trying to do. Do you have an update on that and our advocacy with, with that effort?
We did issue that letter that I believe we brought to the council last meeting. The updated draft was supposed to be released this week, so just tonight.
It was.
Yep, I have reached out to RCRC for that updated draft, and we're, we're taking a look at that as well. And we will probably issue another set of recommendations.
There's a meeting, there's a public meeting that you can join in on. It's coming up like on the 22nd or the 18th very soon, which is.
Yes.
So could you update the council?
Sure.
With what, what the new regs have in them and were we successful at all? And when this meeting is that we could call into?
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
I can make sure you have that information. Yep.
It's scary.
Okay. Yes, I was just talking about with Chief Sholand about that before this meeting. Okay. Anything else on the Board of Forestry fire regulations? On emergency operations, we had our first successful EOC of 2021 for the snow event with the town and cooperative agencies. We met in EOC for about a week and we scheduled an additional staff and personnel through cooperative agencies to make sure we were prepared to plow the roads, which we did with our own town staff. So that was a successful mostly exercise, but we built some good relationships with the National Weather Service who participated in all of our calls. So that was very helpful. For regional emergency management meetings, we have met with Butte County. We've met with the City of Chico twice. We did reissue to the City of Chico the objectives and the corrective action plan that we're hoping to work on to improve regional emergency management, like traffic flow, evacuation mapping and public information. So that's ongoing. And then I know we have an upcoming EOC overview for council, and we're doing some training for staff as trainings become available and staff has the ability to attend. So that is moving forward. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you. What's that? Escape? And you'll, you can navigate from there.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
So, Fire One. Public Works Infrastructure Recovery and Sewer Update by Public Works Director Mark Maddox. Hello, Mark.
Hello, council. Thank you, Mayor Crowder and Vice Mayor Jones. A pleasure to be with you this evening. I will provide a brief update for Public Works Infrastructure Recovery. I did, I am so excited to let you know that we have issued numerous task orders when it comes to infrastructure recovery for our engineering department managing consultant work. To name a few, we've authorized work to begin on on-system and off-system road rehab across three different consultants for three different zones for each of those projects. We have projects moving forward for on- and off-system culvert replacements, sign replacements, rehabilitation for Neal Road in particular. We've issued a notice to proceed for our transportation master plan. We are moving forward with the storm drain master plan as well. And also, we can expect the Ponderosa Elementary Safe Route School Project to come before the council next month for approval to advertise the project for construction. Also later this evening, you'll have a action item for awarding contracts related to the Almond Street and Gap Closure Complex projects in the downtown for sidewalks, curb gutter, road rehab, drainage improvements later tonight. So excited to bring that to you as well. And then as far as a sewer update, you've probably been apprised of some of the activity, but last week we did go to the City of Chico City Council and asked for approval for them to execute a cooperative work agreement, which would outline a specific scope of work that the City of Chico is going to undertake and allow them to better study what their water pollution control plant needs for a potential connection with the Town of Paradise. We also asked for them to select representation on a regionalization project advisory committee that we provided updates earlier this year at the January council meeting to, to you. So takeaway there is they unanimously approved the draft cooperative work agreement and selected also their mayor and vice mayor to participate in the committee. Since that time, staff has provided presentations to the Butte County City of Chico Local Government Liaison Group, to LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission, and this morning, the Butte County Board of Supervisors. Across all of those presentations, there was a lot of questions, and we really appreciate those as we continue on our public scoping and getting ready to launch the next steps in the EIR. And with that, we are excited to keep moving forward. We will be looking ahead to establishing the first regionalization project advisory committee meeting in likely March. It's looking like it's a couple of weeks out, but we're going to be reaching out to weeks out, but we're going to be reaching out to the mayor and vice mayor of both the town and the city to find out what would be a good time to set that first meeting, and then we can have further discussions about a regular cadence of future meetings thereafter. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have relating to infrastructure recovery in the sewer project.
Good progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
You love the speechless. That's great.
I'm just glad I could understand you without having a mask on, you know? That made it really a lot easier to listen.
All right. Well, I can hear you well, too. So I'm glad this works out.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, council.
Okay, so next we have the business update by Assistant Town Manager.
Award-winning.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you again for that. That's very, very kind of you. I feel very honored to have been given that award. And just for you, Councilmember Colletton, I will remove this so you can hear me. So I have a very brief update tonight for, on business and economic development. So first, I want to go over our business spotlight for this week. As you know, the Paradise Chamber has been providing weekly spotlight for businesses here in town that we provide on our weekly update, and I also give them at our council meetings monthly. So this, this week, we are going to talk about Treasures from Paradise, which has been around for 20 years, although their items they have are much older than that. From collectibles to home decor that represents paradise, they have many items that you can actually view online on their gallery, on their website, which is treasuresfromparadise.com, or you can stop by and visit them at 969 Billy Road. So that is our business spotlight for this week, and I encourage everyone to go and visit Treasures from Paradise, which is a wonderful Paradise business. So then I also wanted to talk about something we touched on last week, which is a portion of the scope of the transportation master plan. Because that plan is funded by the EDA, there's a strong economic development component, and part of the scope is a non-residential market study. We're very excited about this opportunity because this really is going to be an opportunity for Paradise to have a market study that is Paradise-centric. As you may know, there is a regional study that is going on. We're very close to a final draft on that study that we'll be seeing very shortly. But again, it's regional. It's actually tri-county. So it gives a very good broad perspective of our economy since the campfire. But this opportunity for the non-residential market study will really focus on Paradise and allow us to do some projections, to look at our individual properties that we have in town, and gather information that will be very useful as we talk to businesses who are interested in coming to Paradise. So we've just started this process, and I look forward to updating you as we move forward and letting you know the tools that come out of that, out of that plan. And then finally, this is an update on an item that's actually on the agenda for later today on the public hearing. So as you probably know, we've received from some funding from HUD for COVID relief. It's part of our CDBG annual allocation, and they're called, it's called CDBG CV, if you want some more acronyms, and that is for COVID relief. And so we would like to use those funds for some small business relief for COVID. And however, it has been difficult to put together a program that satisfies HUD's requirements. We have some challenges post-fire with data and being able to provide the data that's needed to show that we're providing services to those who need it through HUD standards. So we're working through technical assistance with a great firm called Lisk, that they're going to help us put together a program. So I'll have more information on that for you in the coming months. But later today, we'll have a public hearing that will allow us to accept that second round of funding for the CV funds. But I really look forward to putting that program together and offering some assistance to our Paradise businesses. And that concludes my update unless there's any questions.
Yeah. Was that, that COVID fund, that CDBG fund, is that going to be for businesses that have lost business due to COVID?
Yes, yes. It would be for COVID-affected businesses.
Any business in town?
Well, it's, it has to meet some HUD standards. So we're trying to craft the program so that as many businesses as possible will be able to take advantage of that program. However, HUD has some standards about income and creating jobs that will have to be met. So there will be some details that will be forthcoming about that program.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Collette.
Thank you.
So we have housing update by Kate Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor Crowder, Vice Mayor Jones, and council members. I just wanted to take this opportunity to provide you with a brief summary of what's happening in housing. As you probably know, we have already rebuilt over 700 homes in Paradise. 622 of those are single-family homes and 80 are multifamily units. We also have over 900 in construction right now, so we're getting there.
Wow.
Available right now, we still have our rebuild advocate program, but I will tell you that we have funding for two, but right now we're only seeing the interest for one of them. We haven't filled one position. They left to take another job, and we just haven't been that busy. We're hearing a lot that people are waiting to hear about what's happening with the lawsuit. So we, I gave you some data on some things, some calls and emails they're receiving in January. We're even doing an outreach to all of the property owners who have not rebuilt. We sent out 71 letters to them describing our services. We only received a 10% response rate, and with that, two no builds, three who are yet waiting, and only two who were interested. So that's only a 3% response rate. We're going to continue to do that, but I think the PG&E claims process is really slowing some things down for people. So the, our rehab reconstruction program, we've had 103 express interest. We are processing about 47 of those, but about 40 of them did not qualify, whether it be ownership income or rebuild. They might be rebuilding back too big or not on the same property. They might not have owned it at this, at the time of the fire. But we do have a goal to spend the $23 million with 150 homes in three years, and we are hopefully assisting 47 this year. So we're keeping on track with that goal. Keep in mind, we still have a first-time homebuyer program. We still have funds. It assists with $40,000 for down payment assistance, and campfire survivors are likely first-time homebuyers. If anyone lost a home, even though they've been on title in the last three years, if they don't have a habitable property, they are considered a first-time homebuyer. Unfortunately, our problem is it's acquisition-only, so you have to buy a standing structure, not build one. We don't have a lot of houses for sale still.
Yeah.
But we are urging contractors to think about spec building. So next is what we have in the works. Oh. Arrow, arrow up, arrow down, arrow over. Hitting all the arrows.
Where's your mouth?
Thank you. In the works, we have CDBG DR. There is a single-family rehab reconstruction element to that. The state is able to provide a grant of up to $200,000 per household. This is for lower-income households, 80% AMI or less. But we will heavily market the program, and the projected rollout is in March. So we're hoping that will help a lot of people who have been in FEMA housing who might need a little extra assistance. This is a statewide activity, not specifically for the Town of Paradise or Butte County, and it is run by the state and their consultants. They're also running a multifamily rental housing program. $55 million are specifically for Paradise. Right now, the large project procedures are out. That's eight units or more. And we will have a small development, one to seven units. Those procedures and policies will be out in March and April. We're looking at hiring a consultant, probably in conjunction with the county, to help us take a look at projects and understand which ones would be best for that $55 million. Right now, we're doing our due diligence, providing paperwork to HCD, and solicitation for the bids should be between March and July of this year. We're also working on the State Water Resource Control Board, and I apologize, at least from my standpoint, we've been working on this for a long time. It is, the town and county is looking at a septic tank replacement program for rebuilds only. So if someone's rebuilding their house and needs a septic system, State Water Resource Control Board, we're working with them to grant that new system.
They have to have lost their home and rebuilding that home?
Yes, on the same lot.
On the same.
And it is a grant, and there is no income restrictions to this one. Anyone within town should be able to, if they meet those specifications, should be able to qualify. And that rollout, I'm hoping, will be this April timeframe. Lastly, we are working on the housing element and the consolidated plan that you'll be awarding this evening, hopefully. And the biggest, I think, key to that is that there will be a lot of citizen participation and participation from developers and contractors and business owners, that opportunity to talk about the housing element and the next five years for CDBG funding. So that's all that I have, and if I can answer any questions, I'm happy to.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Okay. Next up is the consent calendar before we get into any cards, Tina.
I had no cards on this item.
Okay. Any council member?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Bowlin, seconded by Jones. Roll call vote. Councilmember Bowlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Colletton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye. Okay, item four, public communication. Any cards?
We did not receive any cards or any emails or phone call requests for public communication.
Okay. Well.
And the phone hasn't rang, so.
I'm glad. It scares me when it rings.
So we'll move on to public hearing and staff report.
Good evening again, council. So tonight, this is the item that I mentioned briefly earlier. This is a public hearing that is required for a substantial amendment to our CDBG annual allocation. So because HUD did this addition to allocations for every entitlement community, as far as I know, in the state of California and perhaps beyond, for COVID relief funding, we are required, because it is such a large percentage of our annual allocation, to have a public hearing to solicit any comments on this substantial amendment proposal. And so you can see in the staff report, we have been allocated $108,625. This is the second allocation. The first one was just above $99,000. So we're a little bit above $200,000 that we have received in this funding allocation. So we very much are looking forward to putting together a successful program that HUD will accept to allow us to offer these funds, hopefully as grants, to small businesses who would qualify for HUD standards. And so that's what we will be working on, and we just ask that you hold this public hearing to solicit comments. This is the first of two required public hearings. So there will be a second one at the March meeting as well. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So, yeah, real quick. So once we get this money, we do these public, so then we'll, we will let all of our businesses know, everybody in town know?
Yes, absolutely.
That it's available?
Yes, so.
Whether they meet the requirement.
Well, the first step, and we're doing this concurrently with, you know, taking the steps to be able to receive the money.
Right.
Was, is building this program. So first, we have to have a program that HUD approves that we can, that follow their guidelines. Once that is confirmed and we sign a grant agreement, we have to have a separate grant agreement with HUD for this funding. Once that is done, then we can advertise and let all of our businesses know that this is available. And this is our funding. So this is different than the other programs that we've seen kind of come through from the county and from the state. This is something that we can provide. We can set the guidelines as long as they meet HUD's requirements.
As long as you meet the HUD requirements.
Yes, as long as they meet HUD's requirements. So we can, we can structure it the way we want, and that's why we're excited to work with Lisk, who's helping us navigate those guidelines, because this is a program we've never done before. We don't have a lot of experience with that, so we want to make sure we're following all the rules.
Are we going to use like the chamber to help let all the sense of?
Absolutely, yeah. We will use all of our communication channels to make sure this is widely available.
Thanks, Collette. Okay, so at 8:12, we'll open the public hearing. Any cards? Okay, so at 8:12, we'll close the public meeting. So.
Who wants to wait?
Yeah.
Who wants to wait?
Just wait, just wait.
Okay.
I'm in a hurry.
You go use the restroom.
Okay, it's 8:13. We'll close the public comment and come back to council for discussion.
Move for approval? No, no action required. Okay, sorry. I take that back.
What have we done?
That's it?
That's it. We don't do anything. Go on.
Okay, so 5A.
That's what you just did.
Sorry. 6A. Mark Maddox.
Hey, Mark.
Hello again. Good evening, council. Tonight, on our regular agenda, this is the first item, item 6A for awarding construction contract and construction engineering professional services agreement for both the Almond Street multimodal improvements and Paradise Gap Closure Complex. These projects predate the fire. Actually, back in 2016, the Town of Paradise received two, actually a combination of three, major grant applications or grant awards through the Active Transportation Program. This program funds sidewalks, bike lanes, bike paths, drain, associated drainage improvements, lighting, landscaping, and any, any type of meaningful infrastructure project that encourages and enables those that need to walk and bike as a primary mode of transportation to do so. So these projects were awarded pre-fire and have the benefit of the head start on the environmental review, design process. It's been a long road to get to tonight, and so we are very pleased to present to you an awardable bid tonight after we've gone through an advertisement period multiple times, starting back in September of 2020. And tonight, I am pleased to present the latest bid results that we are recommending award of a construction contract. On that construction contract, we received three bids on January 25th. Between the three bids, Knife River Construction at $5.89 million was our low bidder. And again, this is well under our engineer's estimate for the entire project, which is good news. We are looking to, again, award this contract, and I will get to the financial impact here in a moment. I will take a second to just share my screen, if you don't mind, just so I can provide some context onto where the project is. Can you see my screen now?
Nope.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't do this from the very beginning, but the project encompasses kind of the primary downtown core encompassed by Skyway, Pearson, and Black Olive. Almond Street is included. Burt Street in its entirety is included. Fur Street in its entirety is included. A portion of Foster that is still undeveloped here is included in the project as well. And again, Black Olive Drive all the way to Fur Street. And so the primary scope of these projects is to, again, consistent with the Active Transportation Program, to build sidewalks, bike paths, lighting, landscaping, drainage facilities, to help make those improvements happen. We've been working with you and the community moving forward about leveraging these projects for road rehab purposes. Any, anybody driving in the downtown, especially post-fire, can see the impacts of road rehabilitation needs in the downtown as well. So the construction project before you includes significant road rehab efforts, and we are excited to move those forward. Moving along to the financial impact on the construction contract, we, again, have a low bid, about $5.89 million between the two, between the two projects. And I'm going to go ahead and share this as well, as far as what's included in your agenda item, as far as the contract items and the breakdown between our two grant funding sources, between the Active Transportation Program, congestion mitigation, air quality grant funds, transit funds. And transit funds are funds that the town receives as, as an allocation through Butte County Association of Governments that can be dedicated towards local streets and roads, such as projects as this. And then lastly, you'll see the last column is insurance. And I want to take a moment to highlight our ability to really put together the puzzle on this project. And we are proposing to use insurance for a portion of the road rehabilitation costs associated with these projects. And that's because the campfire did cause significant damage in the downtown, and we have accounted for that accordingly in a FEMA claim. We are concurrently, though, we have an insurance provision for $750,000 for infrastructure damage, and that insurance provision has to be fully exhausted and accounted for prior to the town being able to receive FEMA PA public assistance for projects related to infrastructure. So with that, we're proposing with this action and further documentation in the files and memos and working with all of our recovery partners, is that we are going to subtract the accounted-for damages in the downtown on the roads identified from the FEMA PA claim and account for them here in the insurance recovery portion of this project. What that essentially does is moves and fast-tracks our recovery of road damages of road damages caused by the campfire and moves it into this project and allows us to achieve, achieve our broader objective of providing the infrastructure that is inviting and incentivizing development, certainly working in conjunction with the sewer, multifamily housing, and really essential services that people need to live and frequent the downtown for commerce. So with that said, and the financial impact, I will move on to the other discussion, other contract we are looking to award tonight, which is the professional services with Mark Thomas. Mark Thomas is proposing to leverage staff and provide inspection services and construction management. Mark Thomas was instrumental in the design process and provides a unique benefit between working on the other side in the design and helping us manage the construction, allowing us to be really efficient with our processes and making sure that there's no surprises or issues with the design and making sure we have proper and adequate staffing. As you can see in our recovery update, between engineering in-house staff of two and our construction inspector, this job alone warrants some augmentation. And so we are excited to recommend Mark Thomas to do that, help us manage the construction moving forward, and again, funded through the grant sources identified. So with that, I believe I've, it's addressed kind of the staff report. The only change that I did want to mention is during the last bidding period, we talked originally about reducing the working day calendar to 120 days. We did have subsequent consultation with interested contractors and landed on a 180-day working day calendar. And again, we're excited to move forward with the project. And if awarded, we expect that project to be done within, if not sooner, of that contractual timeline in 180 working days. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that the council might have on either of these contract awards.
Do you want to go back out to bid one more time, just see if we get a better deal?
No, thank you. No, again, it was quite a process, for sure. And again, our, our team is dedicated to this town and ensuring that we get the best product that we can and legally award with the least amount of risk to the town. And so again, this is an outcome that we are happy with, but certainly the journey was rocky at times.
That was a joke, Mark. You did a good job.
I can't forget that.
They do good work.
So Mark, is there a performance clause in this for the 180 days?
Yes, so if there is an exceedance, say, we don't have any sort of extensions or any change order work, if they were to exceed the working day calendar of 180 days, they would be charged, I believe it's $6,400 per working day's delay for contract completion. So they are heavily incentivized to complete the work on time.
No, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Mark. Thank you.
When will it start, Mark?
Great question. So working with Knife River, we're hopeful that we can hit the ground running once the winter finishes. So we're targeting April. And we will absolutely work with you, our Public Information Officer, Collette Curtis, about messaging and what we can expect as far as construction timelines. I will note that if anyone's been out there recently, we're still working with AT&amp;T and Comcast. They are fully in the trench, and the Rural 28 project has been completed in the downtown. We just need them to vacate the poles. So obviously, that's a hot issue in general for the town. But at this point in the town, in the downtown, they are fully in the trench, and we need to get them off the poles before we start construction. And we are going to be working with their leadership staff here this week to establish that deadline by the end of March. Otherwise, hopeful we can get started April and really hopeful for a construction that's quick and effective and the least impact to the community.
So if down the road in three years, five years, we're putting in a sewer, we'll just have to dig up those roads?
Yeah, so that's a great question and one that we've pondered with a lot of, a lot of thought about what, what that looks like and the potential compatibility issues with the sewer. As far as recovery goes and working towards and providing the infrastructure in the downtown, we are making that decision to build these improvements now. We have deadlines to meet and deliverables to provide to the program and the funding. With that said, the sewer project, if it were to complete the environmental impact report in 18 months, as we're expecting, and we find design funds, I could anticipate that would be several years of work. And again, to build the project would be multiple years following that. So while it's not perfect, I think it's the best solution that meets the most objectives of the Long-Term Recovery Plan. And know that when we go to build and design the sewer project, any impacts in the downtown, we'll ensure and follow our own standards for road rehabilitation that the roads, if, if they are cut in too early, that they are restored to the pre-construction state.
Cool, thanks.
And that's going to be built in.
Thank you.
Great question. Thank you, though.
We'll just blame it on PID.
It was just the way he asked the question.
Some people think we're going to own that by then.
Anyway.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Great job.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Ene, any cards?
I have no emails or phone call requests on this item.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Who got the second?
I think Greg did.
Oh.
Okay, motion by Colleton, seconded by Jones. Roll call vote, Councilmember Boland.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Good job.
So 6B. Consider concurring with town staff's recommendation for the town of Paradise to award and execute professional service agreement with Urban Planning Partners. Hi, Susan.
Hi, good evening, council. So this council consideration item is regarding the updated housing element for the next cycle, which will encompass 2022 to 2030. So as part of the general plan, there's seven elements, and the housing element is one of them. And it is required to be updated every couple of years. Our cycle is eight years. And the reason that these elements, or this element in particular, gets updated is because we do need to constantly be updating the analysis of the housing needs in the town. We also develop strategies to provide for those housing needs. We ensure that there's adequate sites available for housing. And we also need to demonstrate that we can accommodate our assignment of regional housing.
Got the adequate site.
Amen. So just as a reminder why it's so important that we get these updated numbers with the amount of housing that was lost in the campfire, of course, our, our analysis from the old cycle will be essentially starting from scratch on this. And that's why it's good for us to keep this element updated and current. So towards the end of December, on the 18th, we did put out an RFP for request for proposals for this new cycle. It was set to close on Monday, January 18th. Then I realized that was a holiday, so we pushed it forward one day. And then we ended up just extending it till the end of our work week on Thursday and allowed electronic submittals also. So within those proposals, they included introductions, work scopes, qualification, references, and then, whoops. And then anything else that they felt was relevant for us to know.
You need help?
So we did put together a panel to review these RFPs. It was myself, our housing manager, plus our retired Community Development Director, Al, if you remember him. When we went through this, we had a scoring sheet where we looked at each proposal, understanding of the project, the resources, the personnel, the completeness, and the cost. We had three proposals come to us. One was EMC Planning Group, Urban Planning Partners, and Foreleaf, who is the company providing our building services at the brick right now. Unanimously, staff ranked these proposals in the same order. Our number one ranked company was Urban Planning Partners. They had a very strong team, where they were using local subconsultants that had... They're using Bennett Engineering for some of the wastewater constraints that we see in housing. They are using Deer Creek Resources, which I've worked with through PRPD. They are a wealth of information about wildland urban interface. And that's part of what this housing element needs to focus on. And so overall, they put together a team that is uniquely qualified to meet the requirements of the grant that's funding the majority of this study. If you don't mind, I'm going to take off my mask because it's fogging my glasses. Okay. So this project would run until next summer. That's when the next housing element is due to HCD for certification. $125,000 of the proposals covered by this grant that the town secured for wildfires' resiliency. And then the difference would come out of the next budget cycles fund that's set aside specifically for updates of these elements. And right now, that fund has a balance of just over $1 million. So councils, the request of councils to authorize staff to enter into negotiations with the recommended consultant and to authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement with Urban Planning Partners. After that, we'll negotiate and execute the contract. And already on the schedule would be a kickoff meeting by the end of February. If council has any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm really glad to see that we're moving forward with this, and I think we really need the housing element. But we also need the rest of the general plan updated.
You are correct, yep.
So do you have a plan for how we're going to get the whole thing done?
I do, I do. So get started on this, because this grant is time-sensitive. So we need to get started to finish up activities in time. We were waiting to hit a threshold for funding on our end, because that's how we'll pay for that. I anticipate to be there by the summer. So that sometime between summer and fall, we can put the RFP out. What I'm also waiting for is the Transportation Master Plan Study and the sewer study to start wrapping up, because I need that data for the consultants. So I want it start too soon and not have the data available or have to duplicate it. I'd like to be started by end of this calendar year.
Perfect. Thank you.
This is part of it, and then that would complete, that'd be a complete redo of our...
Of the other six elements, yes.
Finally.
Okay. So when someone says you don't have an active, correct general plan, we can tell them.
We are working on it this calendar year, yes.
Good.
And so we estimate, these do take multiple years. The last one was a five-year endeavor. This time, we're going to try to get it done in three.
Three years to get this done?
To get the general plan done. You'll still be here. It'll be fine.
You know, we've been kicking the can down the road for 12 years.
Any more questions, Susan?
Good job, Susan.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Susan.
And congratulations on getting some relief on some of your job tasks that, where you can, you know...
I'm counting the minutes.
You deserve to have a little break, you know?
I've received no email or no cards for this.
Move acceptance?
Second. Motion by Boland, seconded by Tryon. Roll call vote, Councilmember Boland.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Okay, Item 6C. Consider adopting a motion to award professional services agreement with Civitas LLC. Ene Anderson.
Good evening again. I'm here to ask you to award a proposal or a contract to Civitas LLC. We did issue a RFP at the same time for the housing element, thinking we might get contractors or consultants who might want to do both the housing element and the consolidated plan for CDBG, our annual plan. It didn't turn out that way, but we also received three proposals. Civitas out of South Carolina, Crescendo Consulting Group out of Maine, and Karen Dash Consulting Group out of North Carolina. So east coast companies were interested. So we had a review panel of three staff members, those who had the most experience in working with CDBG grant. They were the assistant to the town manager, myself, the housing program manager, and the senior accountant. We, the panel independently reviewed the rated and ranked each proposal. And while all of the proposals were, did effectively address our specific needs, the panel unanimously determined that the proposal for Civitas was the best option. They offered extensive knowledge of the consolidated plan process and expertise in fair housing. They were, had prior experience with disaster recovery and specifically CDBG DR. They have data experience that can satisfy our unique data needs. We do not know, a lot of the, report revolves around the census data. And we do not know our census data. We don't know who's living here, what the income levels are, what the household sizes are. So we're having to use some alternative data. So this is going to be a challenge for this consulting group. So their references spoke very highly of them and with their working relationship of Civitas. And lastly, Civitas LLC offered the services at the lowest price. So win-win. We're asking that the council award the contract for consolidated plan to Civitas for $37,837. And these funds come out of the CDBG resources. So nothing from the general plan. Answer any questions?
Good job.
Thank you, Kate. Any questions?
Well, we have any...
Comments?
No comments.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by, or motion by Boland, seconded by Jones. Roll call vote, Councilmember Boland.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder.
Aye.
Susan, we already said yes. Did you want a break?
And before we go to 6D, we'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you. We need a vending machine in here. No, a vending, food, something to chew. Can't chew soda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, you're ready.
Woody.
I move approve.
Yeah. I know you're like...
Go.
Vending.
Okay. Item 60, sorry about that, Susan.
Oops.
Consider discussion providing staff with direction on desire changes painted of the Paradise Municipal Code relating to street vending.
Thank you, Mayor Crowder. So this was actually discussion that staff and council was having right before the fire. And we were scheduled to come back and discuss further in November of 18. And so some time has elapsed, but it seems relevant now considering the current landscape of construction to talk about this again, so. Oh, no. No.
The batteries are fucked.
Okay. So just for some information for some of the newer council members, before 2005, a vending license could be issued on any private commercial property, and there was no limit on what you could be selling. It just needed to be, you know, commercial, zoned for retail sales. After July of '05, they added some language because by then, we had classified geographical area as our downtown. And so they put some language in there that vending in the downtown was limited to three days and needed to be tied to a community event like Gold Nugget Days, Johnny Appleseed. And then they also had this other provision that if you did food concessions, so food trucks essentially, outside of the downtown, you could only get a license for one year. And then the idea was you needed to find a brick and mortar to be in after that. Were you fast? Sorry.
Sorry.
So two years later, it was edited again. And at that point, it was lengthened to four days in the downtown for these community events. And they took away that caveat that required a food concession vendor to find a brick and mortar after a year, so they could essentially start renewing their vending licenses. Our last edit came in 2014, and that's when vending was narrowed down to just food sales or food concessions and flowers. We started to have this pop-up of like weekend, weekly weekend yard sales on commercial properties throughout town. And so this was one way to address that. Also, there was additional language put out there that for certain organizations that were having, you know, sales of their own on their own property, they were exempt from vending. The Elks, for example, they would do an outdoor yard sale every year. They're exempt from vending. It's on their own property. It's an activity of their club. Thank you. So this has come up recently with some new food vendors who have wanted to partake in this licensing is about mobile vending. So the town's always done fixed location. And we do have two code sections that talk to that about no vending on any public property sidewalk streets and another no vending for vehicles specifically parked private public roads. One reason for that, as we all now know post-fire, is how many of our roads are private, right? So that's people's private properties. That, that's a question of whether or not we have those rights to give commercial enterprises to engage in business on those private easements. An example, when somebody wants to run a business out of their home and they live on a private road, they need every other landowner with legal vested rights to that easement to co-sign their application. If one withholds, we can't issue the home business license. So, oh, go ahead, sir.
I'll get back.
Okay. So where is the downtown? Because that's really what tonight's conversation is about. The downtown is a geographical area that's Skyway, Almond, all the way to the Trailway between Pearson and just above Elliott.
Before we get into this...
Yes, let's go back to mobile.
I don't want to, yeah, I don't want to...
Absolutely.
Use it too. So the, the, the whole part of the, the private roads and stuff like that. My confusion with that, I mean, obviously, things are much different today than they were back in '05, 2014, and all that.
Yes.
We're in a different, totally different situation. You have UPS, FedEx, carpet cleaning companies, all these other vendors that are traveling on these private roads to do work for someone at their house on these, on these roads.
You are correct.
So you, you, what we're talking about, what I'm talking about is we have a, we used to call and, called a gut wagon. I mean, it was a, it was a mobile truck that went around and, and carried food to the job sites for people to grab a break.
Mm-hmm.
I've always grown up with them. I never thought about there being a permit for them. I mean, it never occurred to me. I just figured they were able to drive around and do what they want to do. The only prohibition was the, the people that ran the site, the job site, were the ones that picked who came there. That was the only thing that was a big deal. So I, I'm confused. We allow all these other businesses to drive those private roads. We allow them to do all this stuff, but we won't let a gut wagon?
Right. So will you see a difference between like a delivery service? Like I've ordered goods and I expect it to be delivered, and on a private road, there's the expectation that your guests or something you've ordered can come to you, but not just the random solicitation of business.
But if they ask, if they ask for that person to come every day and stop at their site to, to bring food, is it any different than a delivery service, a pizza service, or anything like that?
You're right, that could work. So if, if one of these mobile units, like if you wanted to order a bunch of breakfast burritos every Wednesday, so you called it in, they knew that was a standing order, and they're just delivering to you.
No, I'm not talking about that.
I thought, I thought that this was about, I thought that that thing you showed one, this was about Cottage Industries. And we had like some people doing body shops on, on Foster Road or something, right? And they had business coming there. People that wanted to make homemade jam or jerky, and they wanted to sell it out of their garage or crafts. And so if they were on a private road, because you had to get, you have to do a cottage business, you had to get a permit from the county. And then we started...
And I get that. That's a whole different thing, what I'm talking about.
No, I thought that's what this was about.
Izzy's, Izzy's has got a little truck that's driving around town. I don't know if you've seen it.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I've seen it.
And he, he opened up his truck at a job site.
Right.
And he happened to hit me up the other day and said, "I'm having trouble. I can't go around and do this." And I'm going, "Well, I don't understand." So that's why we talked earlier.
You're right. We've never licensed mobile food vending. We're probably one of the few jurisdictions that don't do things like ice cream vans and such.
So I, you know, I'm, again, we're in a different situation.
But we could if we wanted to.
You could. I guess it's just, I just want to provide all the information for council so you can make the best decision that you can make. And one of them is about people's private roads. They're financially responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of it. And so normally, when a commercial activity like that, like a solicitation kind of activity happens on those roads, those other landowners get the opportunity to say yea or nay, which we view differently than delivery services.
So I, I would like for us as council to consider allowing, I mean, we're in a different situation right now. A lot of job sites, I mean, we look at the, the list, 900 homes going up right now and or dwellings. You know, there's, there's a need out there. People can't just stop and run to the, you can't go to the restaurant anyway. I mean, you, you stand outside in the rain if you, but anyway, it's a whole different thing. But so COVID's kind of messed things up, but this makes it convenient for people to get something. So I'd like for us to consider at least allowing that to happen, so.
Absolutely.
I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I know you're going somewhere.
No, no, but totally makes sense. That's what tonight's all about, is giving direction back about what the council would like to see as an amendment, if any.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that everybody was clear on where the downtown was. And it's actually made up of five different zonings. Most of it is the CB, which is central business, the downtown, but there is some residential in there also.
I wanted to clarify.
Yes.
So you're saying the downtown is, is, is only what we're looking at right now?
Most of it is the CB, which is central business, the downtown, but there is some residential in there also.
So you're saying the downtown is only what we're looking at right now?
Yes, correct. We can issue vending license outside of the downtown, but this is still locked into that four days a year for community events. You can't vend full time in the downtown.
And wasn't this all created back when we had redevelopment? Isn't this the downtown revitalization zone?
You are correct.
And it's when we had redevelopment, it's been outlawed, no longer exists.
And we're paying back.
Yeah.
You're right, we don't have an agency, but we still have a geographically designated area.
But we could change that.
Absolutely.
And we could change things outside of the downtown if we wanted to as well.
Absolutely, yes. So this is post-fire downtown, right? So where it left off right before the fire was council's direction to staff was, please investigate approximately how many properties in the downtown appeared to have enough physical area to actually host food trucks, to see if this was even something worthwhile. Obviously, this is a completely different landscape now. Everything in red were destroyed buildings, black are standing, the other colors mean the structures took some kind of damage. So as Woody was talking about, the downtown revitalization master plan in 2000, plus the 1994 general plan, they both talk about the downtown and identifying goals, about how we strengthen that and, you know, promote the retail and professional services for that area of town. So here's where we're going to get into the discussion part, is whether the council sees vending to fill the role of visitor services and retail sales that those other documents previously adopted have called out for the downtown. In this post-fire scenario with limited prepared food options, does the convenience and need outweigh those established guidelines that we previously adopted for the downtown? And I think that the argument made for that, for sure. So if there is a desire by the council to see full-time vending in the downtown, are there any special considerations or conditions that we should be looking at, such as a sunset date for the ordinance? Do we want to do this forever? Do we want to do it maybe for five years, three years? Because I'm sure we still have this goal to rebuild that downtown. Is this what you want in the long term? Do we only allow vending on properties with site improvements? And by that, I mean some kind of, something more than dirt. I've got some concerns about erosion control on some of these sites. Also, should we enumerate in the ordinance specifically about the requirement to provide evidence of solid waste service? We don't right now, but we certainly could.
Yeah, we need to.
That might be easier as a point of enforcement. And then the other question, should all vending be permitted in the downtown, which means food concessions, which is also fruit stands, vegetable stands, and flowers? Or do you only want mobile food facilities, like food trucks in the downtown? So these are some of the questions staff brings for council to discuss and any items that you'd like to bring up, I'm happy to discuss some, but I'm here to take some direction back.
Susan, have you done any outreach to the brick, and not that we have a lot, but the brick and mortar restaurants that are left and in the downtown and what their thoughts are on this? Are the food trucks hurting them? Are, I mean, I don't, especially when you see, you know, there's like Miho's has a food truck and Izzy's like, you know, and that I get, but I also see them coming up here from Yuba City and what have you and to compete with Nix or what have you.
That's the only one I can think of in the downtown. I'd be happy to talk to Nikki, she's lovely. That's the only one I can think of in the downtown that they'd be competing against.
Well, there's also a couple Mexican restaurants that are brick and mortar.
In the downtown?
Yeah.
Yeah, is it Rico's the taco place? And then I guess Maria's would be just outside of the downtown.
Maria's is outside.
There's a new Tocaria right at Skyway and.
That's outside too, though, isn't it?
No, it's in, it's in, well.
It might cut right through that property. It'd be very close.
It'd be very close.
Is that outside?
Susan, I have a question.
Yes.
In your staff report, you said that you identified six additional food vendors set up around town who don't have the required vending license. What's being done about that?
All of those landowners? Well, code enforcement staff did stop and talk to those vendors and all of the landowners have been noticed. And we've had three of them already submit, I think already have issued their vending licenses. So we saw.
The other three?
We'll follow up with second inspections and then we'll start with citations.
They should be asked to leave. If they won't get a license, they should be made to leave town.
They have to leave. We don't let them.
Not give them a citation, tell them to pack up and get out if they won't get a license.
If I drive my car down the street drunk or I don't have a license and stuff, you know, they're not going to just give me 30 days to become compliant. I'm going to get in trouble, I'm going to go to jail. I mean, it's not okay, these people coming in here taking all this revenue. I've been a guy that's been, I complained about the first food truck across the street to Miho's, but he's still mad at me for that because I thought it was a competition with brick and mortar, you know? I don't have a problem with opening it up, but they have to, if we go open a restaurant, you guys are going to say, I've got to have handicap parking, I've got to have handicap side, I've got to have all these conditions, you know? I'm going to have to have storm control. So, yeah, I mean, they're not paying anything, we're getting no tax revenue from it. Maybe they're paying Ace Hardware to be in their parking lot, but Ace Hardware's still there. But I mean, all these, like these guys setting up the Butte County BBQ on that empty lot up there on Upper Skyway, there's no income to the town from these people, none.
Their sales tax does not come to us, I just learned that, that's very concerning to me. The sales tax goes to the county.
There's no sales tax on food.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, they collect sales tax.
I pay sales tax on food.
It's just the fruit stands and the vegetable stands, those are the ones that are exempt because they're not prepared.
Dirt because they're not prepared.
So I think probably two things from my standpoint. The first is I am concerned about the competition with the brick and mortar stores who have made a commitment to our community. They're here, we want to see them, you know, survive and go forward. The other thing I'm wondering is, is can we put something in place so that they, some of them have more curb appeal than others? And can we put anything in place to sort of say, hey, you need to make it look nice?
Absolutely.
And I do, I would like to see us have or encourage even more of the mobile trucks because I like the idea, it really helps cut down the traffic to the downtown, especially these larger jobs know that this truck is coming. And I've talked to the guys when they're out working, they're like, they're all like waiting for the truck to show up. And I think that's brilliant. And that also pairs with one of our brick and mortar stores. So I would like to, you know, encourage that and help that business thrive. And I think that's kind of a nice way to do that.
Are you thinking across the board or only when it's tied to an existing brick and mortar as a service they provide?
You know, I'm open to what my other council members think, but I kind of really want to give preference to our brick and mortar stores and help them because they have truly made the commitment versus, there were some great trucks that came up out of the area. I can think of one burger truck that came up, but you know, they're not really tied here, they just come up, they wanted to get the money during the FEMA cleanup. And so I don't know how we do that, not to exclude anybody, but to really try to take care of the people that are in Paradise, our residents that are going to be here, those people. Like Calico Kitchen, they're probably doing their food truck until they can get their store open, you know? So I kind of want to say, yeah, let's help them do that, so.
Do you have people wanting to vend in the downtown? Do you have people coming in asking to do that?
Not asking, we identified one food truck that was set up in the downtown without contacting us first. But historically, I don't know if it's because of word of mouth and people already knew or they just called ahead, so they were given the information, but I believe in the staff reply reference, it's very few and far between that requests were coming in for the downtown, but I could see it in the future because of all the open space.
I'm not sure why we would want to allow it if no one is requesting it because I could see issues in the future. I do want to support the vendors that are here now because we need them for the work crews. I agree with Greg, they're really needed. I agree with Rose that we, Izzy's truck, anything tied to a current brick and mortar, we want to support. But I don't know why we want to open the downtown, there's plenty of room elsewhere in town.
There's nothing there, there's nothing in the downtown, so why not open it?
But then you're going to have to tell them to leave.
Yeah, and if you put a sunset clause on it, it's not a big deal.
I would be more open with a sunset clause.
You know, I'm just saying, I mean, if we're going to, I mean, my opinion, like, they're not, we need them for the workforce. The thing Greg's talking about is a whole different deal. And I don't know how we can, maybe we need to do in amending the ordinance, and I don't know the lawyer's going to get me on this one, maybe we need to, if you're from out of town and have a food truck in our town, the permit is X. If you're a local doing a food service truck or anything like that, or you're a local with a food truck, like the Green Cafe, then the permit fee is Y, you know?
Probably, probably correct.
I know, I know, I know I am, because you're going to charge what the thing is, but, you know, but we certainly need to make, whoever's doing it, I think it's two different issues. The food trucks that are getting the spot that we permit and making them follow all the rules that any brick and mortar, everybody else has got to follow. And then another one is food delivery by either local vendors or whatever, you know? You know, there's two different services there, you know?
I think most, all of your trucks are from out of town. I don't think there's too many of them, they might leave them up here, but I think most of them are out of town. To me, the downtown, I'm not really excited about having it open for the downtown. There's not a lot of parking in the downtown.
No, there's not.
And that makes it very difficult and congested. We, I don't think we need to be plugging it with, there's plenty of places outside of the downtown that they can park.
Was it the pizza truck in downtown? Isn't that the one?
That's the one we identified that did not have a license. And so we notified the landowner and he is relocating.
He moved.
He did, he still needs a permit, but he moved.
But see, you put two or three food trucks in downtown, they're not doing a business there, they can move four blocks away. Nix doesn't have that option.
You're correct.
So I just, we have to protect our brick and mortar. And again, Miho's has a truck, Calico has a truck on their lot, Izzy's is going around, the people that are part of Paradise, that's fine, but I don't think we can, we should flood the downtown with these and, I mean, if you, if.
Okay, I surrender.
No, because we limit the number of them that would be in the downtown if we were going to do anything so you can get some workers to go.
But Greg's part points really well, there's not a lot of places to park a truck in the downtown. That one parking lot where the wood-fired pizza place is, there's a couple of spots.
Oyster Park parking lot.
The biggest thing is protecting the restaurants that are there. And even if you limit it, you're still encouraging competition for local restaurants that are having a hard time making it. I don't think we should do that.
So you guys brought up a business that just jogged my memory when you were talking about Green Paradise Cafe. I don't know if you guys remember, but pre-fire, they had bought that building, just exactly. So they are working on plans right now, they'd wanted that to be their restaurant. Instead, you know, they've purchased a food truck and they're working to make that their commissary. So the goal would be for them to be able to park their truck, they have a really deep lot oddly, to park it in the back there, so then people could park in the parking lot, which is what it's for, you could walk there, get your food, kind of sit and relax. And so it might be a thought that if you did put them there, either they're tied to the structure that's there for commissary, or also think about radial distances from brick and mortars also, like we do with billboards. You can't cluster billboards, they need to be 500 feet from the next one. Maybe we do the same thing, if there's a brick and mortar restaurant, your food truck needs to be X amount of feet from it.
Right, right, that's a good idea.
But that one's not in the downtown.
Which one?
The green.
It is, it's right below the Boys and Girls Club now, with the arches.
You know, is that little?
They got that pre-fire, yeah.
And she was remodeling it and.
What is a commissary?
It's just their kitchen where they have to go back and do dishes, it's where they'll keep the food refrigerated. So every food truck has to tell Butte County Environmental Health where their commissary is, where are they doing their dishes at, where is cold food being stored? So they're all tied to one somewhere, usually restaurants.
So tying it to something like that would be okay with me?
If they had their commissary there, yeah.
The downtown area is fairly small, so I don't really like this so many feet away.
Okay, I was just thinking, it means if we want to protect Nix, that would be one way to do it.
But you have.
But they've been very big.
You have some businesses, Miho's is in the downtown area.
No, they're not.
They are outside of it. And they're just using it because they're remodeling.
Yeah, they're remodeling their house. But the Green Cafe, her building is in the downtown.
Are you, Jody, are you saying if somebody has a commissary in Paradise as opposed to have a.
In the downtown.
Okay, instead of.
They could park their truck behind their commissary, I don't have an issue with that.
Not somebody that has a commissary in Yuba City?
Correct.
Is it the truck the commissary?
But then are we really protecting our brick and mortar stores if we're still allowing, you know, as many food trucks as they want outside of our small downtown area?
We don't have enough people to serve food to the people that are here cleaning this town up and rebuilding.
We're saying not in the downtown unless you have a commissary, unless you have a building in the downtown.
Right.
And I think this can be changed. We're in a unique situation now, we need, we need food service. And I think we need to do something now that's going to last a year or two, then revisit this thing and see where we're at with it. Because no, we don't want to hurt, no one puts money into a restaurant, we don't want to hurt them.
And I think that's where a sunset clause, or at least a sunset review at this point.
Maybe yearly even, maybe we look at it yearly.
And these permits are only good for one calendar year, they always have to be renewed. So even if you pushed it five years out, as long as it was clean as of January 1st, then we know, we can't renew your license at that spot, this will be your last one because they're always done at a year at a time.
So since we're discussing it, do we also want to put in there about like, say, a ice cream stand or a flower stand or if somebody has a jewelry stand? It's already being allowed right now unless you change.
Correct.
And that's why. I don't like the idea that jewelry store vendor, because it's downtown, hopefully it builds, you will have, I don't want the street vendors competing with the storefronts.
But again, it's until, yeah, it's until we rebuild, right? I see what you're talking about.
Well, you've got Bobby's there next to Nix.
Yep, that's true.
She sells jewelry, she sells clothes, purses, what have you.
And she's allowed to put things on the sidewalk and do that. What this all came about was, if you remember, was the vacuum shop, you know? They had a yard sale, it's a commercial property right on the Skyway and they filled the whole front yard all the time, it was an ongoing yard sale. And everybody complained about it, it was a huge eyesore. And so that's what, that's what we, why we created some of these ordinances.
So do you need more information to bring back to us?
Well, I've got some notes here about crafting some language that says not in the downtown unless it's tied to a commissary that's in the downtown.
Or brick and mortar.
Or brick and mortar, perfect. Or brick and mortar in the downtown or anywhere in town?
In the downtown.
Okay.
I almost think anywhere in town, but okay, downtown.
Then you'd be the lone vote.
Like that bothers me.
About bringing forth a sunset date for it, I don't know if there's a collective idea, is five years sound okay? Would you like less, more?
To your point about, do they have, does it have to be on a developed piece of property on an asphalt parking lot? I mean, I know that part of the ordinance says that you have to have an agreement with the property owner.
Correct, you need their, yes, you are right.
To get the permit.
You're right.
So if we don't go to that far and say it's got to be on a developed piece of dirt, we certainly need to add in there that you have to, because, you know, we got to put up wattles for any construction we do, you can't just set up in a dirt lot. And there's got to be everything. The other thing is a brick and mortar's got to have a restroom, they got to have hand, you know, these people have nothing, they don't, some of them don't have garbage cans, so we need to make sure that they have, they have to follow the same rules that somebody else does. They just have to, otherwise it's not fair.
And a porta potty is not okay.
Yeah, and a lot of them.
Porta potties aren't mandatory.
You're not going to keep vending trucks if you start doing all that. These people, a lot of people grab their food and they go. They take it and they go to their offices, they take their food and they go to the job site, they're not staying there, that's, the majority of people go with their food and go somewhere. My truck is my dining room, I don't know how that happened, but I don't get to eat anywhere anymore, so it's just, it's not, it's not, if we start saying that.
No, I don't mean all that, I didn't mean all that, but you got to have it, there's got to, they have to follow some kind of rules. There's got to be a garbage can there.
Garbage can, yeah, no, I'm not disagreeing with that, but they have to have ADA bathrooms and all the other stuff that's going to be.
I just meant as far as, you know, like, if you're going to set up a barbecue or a food truck on a dirt lot, you know, and it's implement weather, you're going to make, you know, you're going to track mud out of the streets or, you know, just.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So are we saying that we want to have concrete pads then? Is that the bottom line?
No, no, no.
Asphalt.
Something hard surface.
Oh, I like that, hard surface.
They're not allowed on undeveloped ground or something like that, maybe.
The one thing you've missed is the mobile delivery. We all want to allow that.
Okay.
So eliminate that thing.
And do we want to say that we want to allow that if it's attached to one of our brick and mortar stores or just in general?
It doesn't have to be attached, I mean.
No, I think it's just, you just got to either allow it or don't.
They, they're, don't they fall under some type of health criteria as far as their food and delivery and?
Those vehicles are still inspected, correct. They get a mobile food facility license, yeah.
They got to get that from the county.
Yes.
That's got to be done, so I think.
And we still need evidence of those to issue the permits, yeah.
And your question about a sunset date, I think five years is too long.
Okay.
I'd be more interested in.
Two years.
Two years, okay.
Two is good, that way we can revisit it if it's not working.
And then in response to something Rose had mentioned earlier about design aesthetics, I've seen, you know, I've looked at a lot of different agencies, mobile food vending ordinances, and there, it's not uncommon to ask for like skirting to cover the wheels because the reality is they're not pulling these units on and off every day. So I don't know if that's something that we're interested in, is it more about calling out limits on what kind of seating they have? Or do you not want to see those metal carports anymore, those kind of things? And we can specify just the downtown, we could say townwide.
Me personally, I want to be very careful, too many limits to it. For these first two years, let's get the trees done, let's get, let's get some of the building back and.
Absolutely.
We got to get commercial in, so it's going to take workers to do that.
Last question. Does council have a desire to set their own limits for how many vendors are on one property? Typically, it's at the discretion of the planning director, but if council has a feeling about that, I'm willing to take direction on that too.
Do you have multiple trucks that want to be on the same site?
Yeah, there are some sites where there's multiple.
On very rare occasion, but I just want to, if they found some spot and were offered complimentary services.
Well, they used to do this.
Here's something that's kind, sorry, okay. They do, what is it, like, in some areas they do food truck fairs, which are actually kind of a cool vibe and I don't know if we could attract people from.
We did them pre-fire.
Out of Chico or something like that.
We did them before the fire.
Yeah, we did an outdoor festival permit to the food truck Paradise and they did it at CMA because normally you can't do full-time vending there, but they could do it as a special event, it was like the last Wednesday of every month in the summer, it was pretty cool.
If that Safeway parking lot is cleaned up and you could put quite a few.
We don't own it.
You'd have to get the owner to okay it.
But yes, we have the means to support something like that under our outdoor festival regs, which give a little bit more leeway where in town you can send those.
And if we wanted to sponsor it, we could use our parking lot parking lots and then that could be a revenue stream for us if we wanted to sponsor it.
So another question.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of the CMA church, they had a, they have a taco truck that's there and I guess that's become an issue.
Right, because it's in a zone that doesn't permit food sales or retail sales for year round vending. You could get a special permit to do those special, like food truck rallies, but not for year round.
And it's just all because of the zoning.
All because of the zoning.
But you can do a Tuesday morning, you can do a Tuesday morning farmer's market.
The farmer's market, they actually predated the zoning and the ordinance, so we allowed them to continue.
They weren't always there though.
No, but they were there long enough that it was before the current zoning's in place.
I would, I would just throw out there to the council that, I mean, to me that just, there is a situation there where there's a parking lot available, a guy's been there since the fire. And just because, just because the zoning isn't perfect, he can't be there anymore.
What's the violation of the zoning?
It's, it's community facilities which.
Let's suspend that stuff, can we do that?
I don't want to do that, yeah, you have to do it forever.
You guys are acting like we're a town with 27,000 people and a lot of stores, we're not.
We're not acting like that.
We're in the middle of rebuilding, we're in a bunch of burned out stuff, you know? Why don't we relax some of these ridiculous rules?
They're in place for a purpose and I don't want to, I don't want to blow the whole ship up just for a few things, but I mean, I think it'd be good to at least revisit, you know, is there some situations in which people can continue? There's a perfect parking lot, and I know Safeway would be the perfect parking lot, you know, if they're zoned right or whatever, but.
They are, they're commercial, yeah.
So, anyway.
No, you're right, and it's something that when we do the general plan update, and maybe there's new zones that we bring forward, or there's some minor, you know, rezoning, this could be also a perfect opportunity to look at it then.
Can you bring exceptions to a zoning thing? Can you get an exception to that?
What I'm talking about is that is part.
Like where this food truck is in the church parking lot, can, 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 are exemptions allowed on any of these ordinances?
They would normally apply for variance. Talking about individual thoughts, something coming to mind.
Right, so variance is how we have them listed. You need to prove that you are suffering from some undue hardship, typically due to topographical features that only you suffer from, that the others in your same zoning district are able to enjoy some benefit. You can't because you suffer unduly.
He's the only food truck in that zone.
And, and I'm not trying to, I don't know the gentleman, I don't know the situation, I don't know anything about it, to be honest with you. And it doesn't help the church at all, but I'm just saying, he's been there. Is there something we can look at? Maybe you can just kind of look through your stuff and bring it back next time.
Okay.
God would let him go in his parking lot.
I know. Yeah, he could, I mean, he could.
Yeah, that.
Possibly would work.
I mean, he's a friend of Scott's, that's why I said.
I, I don't know. Anyway.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, do you have more than enough directions?
I think so. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
That was easy.
And, and I appreciate, I mean, these are, these are tough things to weigh too, because, you know, you, you make an exception in one place, it hurts someone else, or it causes a ripple. There's always a ripple.
Unintended consequences that you didn't foresee.
There always is, and that's.
Okay, I'm just going to stay here, because I'm next.
Nina, any cards?
She's bringing it back, yeah, you're on photo, no.
I'll bring it back next month, because it's not a zoning ordinance, it does not go through commission first. It's Title V.
So, Susan, again.
Yes.
Consider discussing signs in the Town of Paradise and provide staff with verbal direction and/or concurrence of the enforcement of post camp fire damaged and/or abandoned commercial signs.
Thank you, Mayor Crowder. As for code enforcement, as we're taking a look at these priorities, the RVs, we were looking at these food trucks, we're also looking now at these abandoned signs that are still out there. We get complaints to staff, I know there's been written correspondence that comes in. I'm sure you've all seen your fair share of fire damaged signs out there. So this is just a discussion with council, make sure they concur with what staff recommendation is for the enforcement of the different kinds of damaged signs that are out there. So first, we've got two sign ordinances to talk about that we'll be relying on as part of the enforcement. One is in our zoning ordinance, and it's about prohibited signs, and specifically about abandoned signs. So the municipal code sets out a timeframe, 90 days. If you've got to sign up for 90 days that is identifying a use which hasn't occupied the site for a period of 90 days, or isn't, been in a state of disrepair or poor condition for at least 90 days, that's a prohibited sign. And then also in our public nuisance section, signs that are broken, deteriorated, or substantially defaced can be declared a public nuisance under the commercial property maintenance section. So there's two kinds of signs that I wanted to bring to council's attention tonight. One is about undamaged signs on vacant lots. So there's a lot of signs throughout town that the sign structure itself appears to be okay, and so does the sign face. An example's right across the street from Town Hall with Mama Celeste, that's that top example there. It doesn't look like the fire touched the sign at all. And then there's other signs in town where the sign structure looks okay, but the face took damage. It's a weaker material, so some of them melted. The bottom image, that's Calico Kitchen, so when you're driving southbound, you can see that sign face is melted, but the structure itself still looks okay. So some recommended solutions that staff is proposing, depending on what kind of sign we find out there, if it's like Mama Celeste, where the sign frame and the face looks good, the suggestion would be just to flip the sign face around, just like we have at the brick, right? Those were, those were the old B of A signs, and they're just flipped around. That's the top left image. If the sign face is damaged, like at Calico, remove the sign face but keep the frame, because it's still good. And that's like at the top right, that's on Clark Road across from the old Safeway. There are some signs in town, especially when tied to fast food, like McDonald's, their sign is literally the M, so we can't pull that out, or we can't, you know, turn it around. So the other option is to cover the signs like KFC did on the bottom left. And then there's other signs that are made, sometimes of a wood front or just a masonry, like a monument sign, that have those flush mount panels on them, or they've hand painted. Will staff suggest then that those panels either get removed, so they just look like a blank slate like the sign on the bottom right, or you would just repaint over the sign to make it blank, if your image was originally painted on it, if the frame's good? And so I'd like to just stop there and see, does council agree with those courses of action? Or would you like to see something different? Yes.
I understand why we would want to let people keep the, the structure.
Mm-hmm.
They're worth money. Signs cost a lot to put up, so anybody rebuilding could then use it, that all makes sense. The one on the bottom with the plastic all around it is really ugly.
I wish the photo came better. I took that one, and I apologize, it doesn't, it doesn't look like a plastic bag in real life. It looks more like a really thick visqueen material that's like padded on the inside. I don't know how to describe it. It's my poor photo skills, but it's not a plastic bag by any means.
Which sign is that?
It's KFC's.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
So we're going to have these signs taken care of at the cost of the owner of the property.
Yes.
Okay, so then this is, could potentially put us in another abatement situation.
If we prioritize them to that level above others, we could be there sooner rather than later, but yes, ultimately.
Okay.
Now, question.
Yes, sir.
Um, let's say they decide, there's so much damage to the sign that it's cheaper to just take it down and put a new one up. They don't lose that right to put that sign back up on that property?
That is such a good thing, and I'll get to that at the end of the presentation.
That's in the next slide?
It's at the very end, about non-conforming signs, because I do want to talk about that.
I think the biggest issue for me with these signs is that they're advertising businesses that aren't there.
Yes.
And misleading people. It, it, not just misleading people, but I've had residents say that it affects them emotionally to see those signs and the business is being gone. So I think for the mental health of our community, it would be good to have them gone. Not, not the structure, but the actual wording, gone.
Covered up, turned around.
Yeah.
Something, yeah. Remove the burnt, charred, melted.
And I, I don't want to, the property owners to have to expend more money than necessary. So I think your solution is pretty good.
Okay. So the next sign to talk about are damaged signs on vacant land. Those are actually, thankfully, harder to find than I thought. And in most cases, when I did come across them, is, it was because they were wood-framed signs. So this top sign here, this is actually just up the street where Black Olive comes into Skyway. So the very, it's just the white frame that's left, the bottom posts are completely charred, and there is some plastic on there that's melted. So clearly, this kind of sign just needs to come down. Same with, there's a sign on the bottom there that's on Clark Road, where even though it's a metal sign frame, that whole sign obviously was on fire, because all, all the metal's chipping, the sign at top is warped. And so these are examples where we declare this, you know, we'd use the public nuisance ordinance and say this whole thing needs to come down. So that's the proposed solution there. That sound to, okay? Okay, non-conforming signs. So there are signs, especially along Skyway, that are much older than our sign ordinance. They're older than when, exactly. And they're older particularly than the redevelopment project area, and that's that geographical area that we still define, which has its own special sign regulations that are different from other commercial properties. So there are signs, like builder supply sign, the one below is the old sign frame for Pinocchio's, that if those came down, they could not replace them in those same configurations, because we no longer allow pole signs in the RDA, they're too tall. And so when the sign structure is still in good shape, yes.
Can't we grandfather them? I mean, if we wanted to, couldn't we say, if you had a sign before the fire that you had to take down because of the fire, and the property is ever rebuilt, you can have the same sign, if you want it?
Are you saying it would go with the same owner? So if someone else bought the property, they would not have that right?
Why not?
I'm just asking the question, just relax.
I thought you were.
I'm not opposed to either way.
Yeah, no, I mean, because, and we, we don't have an RDA anymore. And so whatever we created when we had that, there was a vision there with all that tax increment, we were going to have all this stuff, so we created these design elements and restrictions, and that got taken away by the state. So we can still have those goals and stuff, and, and we do some of that, but we, why we're, keep carrying this bucket of something that doesn't exist anymore? Let's make new rules for our downtown, you know?
Right, and to address what you're saying, Jody, worst case, we still have an avenue under the non-conforming uses where you could go before the planning commission and ask for a use permit to rebuild a non-conforming use.
Can we just, can we just make it like Jody asked, where, you know, if you, if that was there before and you rebuild, whether you're the current owner or the new owner, that you can do that if you want?
Any property with an un, a structurally undamaged sign can be replaced.
Yes, it would be difficult for us to ascertain what the old sign parameters were, because we don't have permits on most of them, but yes, we could do that.
We can take a picture of it.
Might be up to that.
Yeah, you can measure them.
So, so just that I'm clear, what we're looking at is if the sign remains, then we would consider it grandfathered in?
Correct, as long as these frames stay here, then they can reface them, that's not a problem. It's more of just letting council know why staff's recommendation is to leave the frames in place if they're in good shape, because there are some instances where they could not get a sign back like this. But I also understand, obviously, at the time that the municipal code, that those ordinance was, were written, there was a reason for that. I wasn't around for those conversations, so I can't say what they were, but they had a plan and a goal for those areas. So I'm trying to be cognizant of that also.
And I think, I think the builders sign, that builders has not been there for.
25 years.
A long time, right? It hasn't been 25 years, but it's been, it's been a while.
It's been a while.
And, and it was bought at Salvation Army.
Yes, but they left it, they left that one.
And so there's got to be something to where those signs, you can't just leave an old business sign up on your property if you buy it and redo it.
No.
That's not going to be an issue now.
Oh, no, we would still contact them and say, please, flip it.
But that didn't happen, what I'm saying is that didn't happen.
Oh, no, you're right.
I think we need to, we need to move forward, and you got to, you know, either take it down or put your sign on it, use it.
Or turn it around, make it blank, because it's not serving anything right now.
Did that sign belong to Salvation Army, or to James that bought the back portion?
Oh, that is such a good question, Woody.
I'm not sure the Salvation Army.
You're right, I guess I, I maybe erroneously assumed it was part of the.
And James bought the whole back end part.
Yeah, James split the property into three.
But no, but you're right, don't you take the sign down or cover it up?
Or flip it. Yes, absolutely, so this would be one that we would want something done with it. But I, I just wanted to lay some groundwork about why staff is recommending the salvage of those frames if possible, because they are a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you would like to see an ordinance revision about that, it can be brought to you. It does have to go to commission first about that. Or just know that if somebody wanted to rebuild a non-conforming sign, they, there's still an avenue available to them through the commission, without having to make any changes.
I like your recommendations, I'd like to see an ordinance.
About the signs?
About the signs, yes.
Okay.
We need to clean it up.
We do need to clean it up.
Okay.
Although there's a couple of them that are, that are my, my road markers to know when to turn sometimes.
What happens if, what happens once we, you put the word out to all these property owners? What happens if they don't? Is it that same, send them a letter, wait 15 days, and blah, blah, blah? We need to expedite compliance.
You're right, but we do need to show that we've done our due diligence before we just jump to court and ask for permission to take it down, and again, you know, allocate the funding to do that, but we can. But we need to show that we've at least tried on our end first.
Okay, good job, Susan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I promise that's it.
No, don't say that. And, and, but thank you for taking your mask off when you speak. It's so much easier to understand.
Okay.
People, it's really difficult, even with microphones. At least for me, maybe I just got old ears.
Thank you, Susan.
Thanks, Susan, have a good night.
So, 6F, Chief Garrison, regarding the burning issues.
Good evening, council, mayor. After discussion at last month's meeting, specifically regarding times and then of burn permits, allowances, and some of the items I brought forth, I brought back to you this evening, my recommendations for you to discuss. And so what they are, specific to the ordinances for residential permits, would be looking at rewriting the verbiage in there to be issued annually July 1st through June 30th. The intent would be to allow the current burning permits that were issued in 2020 to extend until June 30th, or, or the end of the burn timeframe as, as we.
What, don't mean to interrupt, what about people, because I understand a number of people have gone in January 1st and bought new burn permits? Will we just allow them to go all the way? In other words, I bought mine in 2020, it expired December, so you're, what you had, we had talked about. So mine will be good till June 30th, right, of 2021? But somebody that just bought a new permit because theirs expired and didn't know about this, will theirs go?
We, we can absolutely make that, make that adjustment if that's.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
But I think we need to draw a line at some point, because otherwise we're just chasing the tail on that entire time.
I'm just trying to be fair to them.
Absolutely, so if that's something the council wishes to do.
If I want to get that six-month benefit, they should too.
I don't disagree, but at some point I got to say, okay, what, when, when are we going to start the process, this new process?
Because this will be 30 days after now, if we do this.
Correct, correct. It would be, speaking specifically again, the residential permits, removing the east-west language that's in the ordinance, and then adding in language that the permits may be suspended, restricted, or prohibited as determined by the fire chief. Land clearing permits, we'd adjust the language for issuance of the permit to be specific for the timeframe, and the intent there is that we go out and inspect the sites, we look at them, they have a timeframe to burn it, whether it be a day, two days, a week, a month, whatever that determination is, it's not a, it's not a full-year permit. It's to get rid of a specific.
For land clearing.
Land clearing project. Fuel reduction permits would be issued annually, June, or excuse me, July 30th through June 30th. And again, we could follow in line with what we just discussed on allowing those permits to continue until, until July 1st. And then adding the language that may be suspended, restricted, or prohibited as determined by the fire chief. And lastly, our fourth permit, maybe people not very familiar with, are campfire, bonfires, recreational fires, adjusting that language in the ordinance that they'd be issued on an annual basis to coincide with the timeframe when we allow open burning in town, unless it's permitted by the fire chief.
What about fire pits? In my backyard, I want to have a fire pit.
You would have to come in and get a, a, a recreation campfire, bonfire.
Okay.
Yes.
And is that like a same feature?
If you're in a, if you're in a manufactured device, that's, that's manufactured for that use, that does not apply to this permit. It's simply if you go out and decide you want to have a bonfire with your neighbors.
No, no, no.
You want to have a campfire, that sort of thing, or you want to have a pit fire with a pig in the ground or something, you need to come get this permit. If you're using it out of a manufactured device that's designed for holding fire, this permit does not require.
Okay, so I could have that on my patio and?
Yeah, if you have one of those metal containers and you throw in a couple chunks of firewood, that, that's not what this permit's designed for.
Thank you. But the other way, if I build a fire ring with, with stones, and I have occasional recreational fires on a summer night, I got to get a permit, annual permit.
Correct.
Okay.
And along with that, typically the fire chief adjusts this with the, with the town manager, but I did provide you guys with my recommended changes so that we can be transparent to the burn permits, and that was the other document that was in your packet there. Specifically addressing, and these are all concerns and things that have been brought to me over the last six to eight months that I've been working here in the town and, and the predecessors before me. So some of the recommendations to the burn permit specifically to residential is opening the burn hours that are currently 9:00 to 2:00 PM, from 8:45 until dusk. Your pile must be completely extinguished before left unattended. So time and time again, I get phone calls of, hey, I want to let my pile burn down. Right now, the permit says it's got to be out by, by dusk. If it's burnt down and you're there in attendance, I'm okay with that. If you're going to leave your property or go somewhere for dinner, you need to put it out.
But we had one where they're, they're sleeping there, and the smoke just filled our house all night long. That, you wouldn't allow that, right?
They should be in attendance, though, in my mind is they should be watching it and checking on it. So if they're going to bed, you're not attending it anymore.
Yeah, that's a good point, but, okay.
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to kind of find a middle ground and address both scenarios.
Yep.
It's not, it's not perfect, but again, you, you, I'm open to what you folks hear.
Yeah.
Again, adjusting the burn season, right now, there's specific language on the permits, January to May, and one month in fall, we'd, we'd adjust that and follow the typical burn season that's within the county, which is roughly in late November, and it goes through until May, and then it's usually cut off at that point. We would close, close burning at that time. Next item is water hose required and able to apply water to all parts of the fire. time. Next item is water hose required and able to apply water to all parts of the fire. We've had requests for other devices that carry water, water extinguisher, backpack water pump, any of those devices. And so the language to be adjusted that other approved firefighting equipment that can be rarely put out, the fire is available and present, and we would provide a list of that on our, our website. So that, the idea is there is this is a, an ember jumps outside of the, the 10-foot clearance ring you're supposed to have, and you can get after it real quick. Because there comes a point that a garden hose or a shovel or, or some other extinguisher isn't going to catch the fire, and you should be calling 911, and we should be coming there. So it's, it's trying to find that fine line in there to address everybody's needs there. Again, removing the east-west on that residential permit. And then on the land clearing, adjusting the proposed language to manage your burn to allow all materials of the burn pile to be consumed and the fire burned down by dusk, and it be completely extinguished before the piles left unattended. Kind of fall in the same lines as the, as a residential. So if you have somebody that's got a vacant lot, we go and issue them a permit. The pile couldn't burn down. If they're going to go home on Chico that night or wherever they live, the fire's got to be out. They're going to stay there and monitor it through the evening while, while it's already burnt down, but there's still hot ashes, then they're going to have to stay there.
But they'd have to stay there with it.
Somebody needs to be in attendance. Fuel reduction permit, language is allowing it, changing it again to annual permit, and then opening the burn hours from 8:45 to dusk. And again, in attendance till extinguished. And then the special burn permit, we would change the language to be issued on an annual basis to coincide when they go up open burning.
Is the recreational permit the same fee?
So your fees, residential permits $25, land clearing's $84, fuel reduction's $54.91, and your campfire, bonfire is a $24.64.
We call some besides campfire?
Yeah.
I'm open to suggestions.
Recreational fire sounded good, you know?
That's, that is on, that's listed on there. I find that sometimes these ordinance things get added on to because people interpret things. They're trying to be all encompassed over the years.
It's real good. It's a good...
Languages.
And thank you so much for doing that. I, I just, I think this is going to be helpful to everybody as we...
So I did, and the 8:45 start time, a lot of folks, I wouldn't say a lot, a handful of folks asked, why can't we start earlier? And so I talked with AQMD Ursula Parker down in Chico, and they're, they typically don't allow burning before 8:45, or they don't provide that information. So I don't want to set the people up for not being successful. And, if they don't have their burn day information posted yet at seven o'clock, they go torch their pile, and by 8:45, AQMD comes out and says, you can't burn today. Well, they shouldn't have been burning. So that's why that 8:45 time is on.
Well, that too, and people are waking up. You don't want them waking up to smoke smell and stuff like that. So I think that's a great, great idea. So...
No, that makes a lot of sense, because you gotta, that's more of the conditions of your permit, is you have to check with air quality to see if burning's allowed that.
So a fire department or, or town can set their own burn hours, and AQMD will follow that just to be transparent here. So if you guys chose to start at 6:00 in the morning, you can do that, and air quality will fall back on those rules.
Man, that's the best time.
The, in the county right now, Cal Fire, nor the county requires a burn permit right now. So the default is air quality management hours. So it is 8:45 to one hour before sunset right now in the county.
That's why we incorporated, so we wouldn't have to be like that. Thank you so much, Garrett. I appreciate it. And I, I think citizens will like it, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Chief?
Good, good.
Thank you, Chief.
Waited the whole night for that? Boy, that's tough. That's brutal.
Mayor Crowder?
You have a...
I do have a, I do have a comment that was emailed in to council.
Oh.
And it was from Palm Lando, interim district manager of Paradise Irrigation District. Following are the district's comments regarding the proposed changes to the Town of Paradise burning permits, elimination of water hose requirements. The Paradise Irrigation District has a history, has a history successfully supported Paradise residential water needs since 1916, including those for property maintenance and fire prevention. While the district supports all efforts being made to allow residents to safely burn, we feel the provision of water service is critical to allow this burning to occur safely. The district appreciates the town's efforts in allowing the clearing of property and wants to be a good partner in this effort, which again, we believe includes requirements for water at the controlled burn sites. Thank you for your consideration.
So what did it say?
I think he's for it.
What did, what did that mean?
He wants to keep the hoses there, which we didn't say don't have them.
Chief, you're not saying that water wouldn't be there. You're just saying that the water could be in some other device besides a hose.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And besides...
Like a water truck or...
Some people have, you know, sprayers on the back of their side-by-sides or ATVs, or they have a water extinguisher and a water can, or they have some sort of other water.
The water would be there. It just might not be in a hose.
Whether it be a hose coming out of the truck or something like that.
It can be, yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be there. But he, yeah, we, we're going to relook at this sometime down the road and reestablish. Right now, there's a lot of lots with no water.
And I'm getting, yeah, and I'm getting that a lot. And if you, if you have a lot and you're not building it, you call PID and try to get them to put water on there so you can burn, and they're not going to do it anyway.
Yeah, wow.
So I got that with one of, one of my neighbors. So, and, and he's trying, and he's doing a great job of cleaning his lot. So this is perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if you have a water backpack, there's a lot of, there's a lot of...
We would require some sort of water extinguishing device or a chemical extinguisher of some sort there to have there, along with a sort of hand tool. And that's why that word approved devices is listed on there. We would list that on the website. So people would know, can't just have a rake. You gotta have something there that can actually be useful and...
Yeah, and if it follows the directions where it's only so big and so tall, that's the other part of it, too. Because even if you got a PID water hose and you build a big mound, you know, because you're not where the fire department drives by every day. I saw that happen yesterday across the street from my house.
So can I move?
Thank you, Chief.
Second.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion by, right, Boland, seconded by Tryon. Okay. So approved, waiving the first reading of town ordinance number 603 in read by title only, and introduce town ordinance number 603 and ordinance of the town council of the Town of Paradise amending section 15.09.100 of the Paradise Municipal Code relating to general open burning. Roll call vote. Councilmember Boland?
Aye.
Councilmember Collet?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
So this is the first reading of the ordinance. It will come back next month for the second reading, and then it will go into effect 30 days after that.
Thank you, Dana.
Thanks, Dana.
Thanks, Chief.
6G, consider reviewing and approving 2020, 2021 mid-year budget. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. Let's get my PowerPoint. Not going to be as, I can just tell you right now, it's not going to be as nice as PowerPoint. He has beautiful PowerPoints. Mine are just bland.
Make a note in your...
Need some pictures?
Needs some color.
Exactly. I, that's why I'm keeping the pictures out. There's, right there. Be positive, patient, and persistent, right? So fiscal year 2020 budget, 2020, 21 budget was adopted July 14th, 2000, actually 20, it's not 21. So I'm going to just kind of walk through some of the changes that I am going to recommend from that budget to the current proposed budget. From the personnel side, these are actions that are already been authorized that we are recruiting, that will be effective in the current revised budget. Co-community development director, Phil, effective 215, 2021. Senior code enforcement supervisor, we're in the process of recruiting for that. And also, the office assistant for the planning, we're in the process of recruiting for that. From the general fund, so Measure C. So part of Measure C, when the adoption of the current budget was, was that there was, it was conservative. So they were looking to see if the PG&E funds came in, knowing that there's quite a bit of a balance in there for the Measure C permitted expenses, which are for public works, for animal control, for police, and for fire. Obviously, the PG&E funds came in in July, and so I am proposing, well, I'll step back. The, the town went through quite a bit of effort to get USDA grants for replacement of equipment. So of that, they got quite a bit of USDA grant to replace the public works equipment, which is the skid steer and four 350s and a vac excavator. They also got a USDA grant for a evidence fridge and for an animal control truck. The thought originally was to try to look to get funding from the Butz Strong Fund to match those funds. So we went to the Butz Strong Fund, asked for that matching, and it was denied. They were looking to kind of change direction on where they were going to be spending their funds. So as we went through this, we felt like this Measure C was an actual perfect location for those matching funds to come out of. So with that, I'm recommending a change from, I'll start with the USDA grant, to match the USDA grant for the 2020 skid steer, the four 350 trucks, and the vac excavator, also for the matching fund for the animal control truck, which is $40,000. And the evidence fridge, the evidence fridge, the local share on that is $2,700. And then there's building upgrades for that evidence fridge that the police are looking to either farm out or actually do in-house, and that's approximately $15,000. With that, after the fire, the police department did forego replacing vehicles. And so based on that, we now have the funds available on the PG&E side to get them up to their vehicle replacement program. We're recommending three new sergeant vehicles for a cost of $200,000. With that, with the Allman Street project, which you saw today, with the budget and the funds, or the bids coming in way below estimate, and using those insurance funds to take care of the local match, there's no need for the 125 that was budgeted in the Measure C. So we'll be replacing, we're taking that out to help. And so the net adjustment on the Measure C is about $300,000, which gives us a remaining reserve balance of $519,000 in there that we can then pour forward. Also on that, looking at the revenues, the revenues are coming in right on budget or a little bit higher based on projections from our HDL contractor who's looking at those. So we're, we're looking really good on those projections even moving forward. So I see a surplus in that even from what we project out at the end of the year. Any questions on those expenses? Those are kind of the big ones that we're dealing with. Yep. Okay, non-departmental expenses, $284,000 expense adjustment, $220 is for the Pearson location for the future fire department. Still has enclosed escrow. Legal has been working with them to try to get some title issues kind of hammered out. So we still have kind of a ballpark of what maybe escrow expenses are. Hopefully, we'll have some answers at the end of this month on what that total is. But remember, the purchase price was $200,000. And then local share costs, $64,000 for local share costs and the hazard mitigation grants. We talked about those. Those are the receipting grants, the advanced planning for 13, and then the resident ignition resistant program, advanced planning grant of $50,000. That is the grant where it allows somebody whose house survived the fire that's not up to code to be able to submit for code improvement. That's just for the planning grant, though. It's trying to develop the planning, the grant. Town manager budget, $79,000 for the fiscal sustainability model, just to kind of give you an update on that. We've kicked it off. They're already developing the model right now. As soon as the model's developed, then they'll kick it over to the operational side of looking at the global side of the town's expenses, revenues, and the future progressive growth to really give that kind of nuts and bolts kind of direction to the town. And then $55,000 for the public relations marketing contract. I'm going to stop right there.
Good.
Because I have a presentation that I'm going to turn it over to the...
It doesn't work.
Thank you so much. Good evening again, council. So as manager Phillips said, I am going to be talking a little bit about the requested budget adjustment for communications, the public relations and marketing plan. Okay, so to step back a little bit, especially for the benefit of the new council members here tonight, right after the fire, it became very apparent that there was a dearth of information. There was a lot of need for information immediately, and we didn't have the ability to get that information out quickly enough. And we needed to expand our staff's ability to get that information out to our residents. And that information was badly needed regarding the response and the recovery efforts and resources for our residents who were displaced and really lacked resources in that time. So it was a really critical time for us. So to address that, in March of 2019, the town hired Blue Flamingo Marketing Advocates to amplify our own communication efforts. This initially was planned to coincide with the UDA long-term recovery plan process. They really came to augment, you know, that outreach that was happening around that, that plan, and they helped with that. And they also were able to help us get that needed information out to the public right away. So during that time, our goal was to get our basic information and resources to our displaced residents. That was our goal, and get it there as quickly and efficiently as possible. The outcome of that, we felt that we did achieve some, we did achieve that goal, because we found that the questions that we were receiving from our residents really changed from asking for very, you know, basic needed information in the beginning, and then through the efforts with Blue Flamingo, that those questions changed to be more about the trajectory of recovery and kind of the long-term vision. We still got those questions to this day about those, those basic needs and, and resources, but it is so much less. And that to us says that most, that many residents now have the ability to, if they don't have those, that information already, they know where to find it, that we have been able to establish those channels for many people. We still provide that information as much as we can, but we've set up those channels for people in, in a way that didn't exist before. So moving into 2019 and 2020, our goal really changed from kind of that immediate response to bringing people home, bringing our residents home to rebuild and get them the information they needed to do that, whether it was make the decision to rebuild and then give them the tools necessary to take the steps to start rebuilding. And so with that, we put, we came out with a very strong communications push to reach as many people as possible with the information about how to rebuild. And so these are some statistics here that talk about the many ways that we did that, and some of those numbers about the reach that we were able to achieve. So we did this through quite a few different ways, through our weekly updates, radio, TV. And you can see, weekly, we had 29,000 TV viewers, 24,000 radio listeners. We have an email list that we own of 4,800 recipients. We have 20,000 followers on our social media platforms. And when we were able to do in-person public meetings, we would average between 300 and 500 attendees and hundreds online as well. Of course, that has changed with the reality that we're in now. We continue to hold public meetings, however, they are virtual. We still continue to see very strong attendance, though, virtually. And so we are happy to continue doing those. In fact, we have another community meeting that is being planned in March, since we're on a quarterly basis now. And I also wanted to talk a little bit about the Make It Paradise website. That is something that Blue Flamingo has created and managed for us. So this actually started out as part of the scope of another contractor with the town. However, when that was not created in the timeframe that we expected it to be, we asked Blue Flamingo to take that on as part of their scope. So it was not initially part of something they were going to do, but they did take that on. They created that. And at this point, 35% of the traffic that goes there is direct. So that means that there, people are actually typing in the name Make It Paradise. So while that brand, you know, could certainly have more acknowledgement, it, we actually do have many people who do recognize that as part of the town's brand. In, from January 2020 to January 2021, there were 37,000 unique visits to the site, 116,000 page views, and 3,800 average page views per month during that time. We've also focused in that time on surveys with the public. Most recently, we reached out to the public regarding our early warning system to get feedback on that. And we had a really big response to that, bigger than anything we've, we've seen. And we really attribute that to the efforts that we reached out to people, to let them know that this survey was happening and getting their feedback. So we were very pleased with the outcome of that. And it really helped to strengthen our application for hazard mitigation for the next round of funding. Blue Flamingo also helps us with press conferences and can, has created a communications calendar that they manage for me so that we can keep track of the many different information campaigns that we put out. We have 40 recovery projects that were identified in the long-term recovery plan. They're, they're all in some stage of, of work that staff is working on, and these are the projects that you receive updates on every month in, in the council meetings. And it's very important that the public is kept aware of, of those projects. It's difficult in this stage, we're kind of in the planning stage, moving into the project phase of these, of these projects. And so it's important that the, that the public is aware of the work that we're doing, although up until this point, there's been very little to see. You know, there's not a lot of the, the digging in the ground, for example, on the sewer or something like that. So up until this point, it's really been conceptual, and now is an exciting time moving into where... these projects are taking shape and we're able to really point to some action on those projects. So now in 2021, we really have a new focus, we want to continue connecting with our community that is terribly important as we are in recovery, but we also recognize that telling the story of Paradise is very important, and we want to make sure that our communication is not only focused on those residents who are here, who are currently rebuilding, but also to those who are undecided, right? We have a population of, of our residents who maybe are displaced and are not sure, they may be here, they may be displaced, they're not sure if they're rebuilding or not. We want to make sure that they are getting that information, that they need to make that decision, hopefully they decide to rebuild, but they need information to make that, that decision. We also want to make sure that people outside of Paradise, who may be newcomers to Paradise, have the information available to them, that Paradise might be a good option for them to relocate. We want to make sure that the story of Paradise that exists outside of our, of our community is a positive one, and is one that people see as a viable community to live in. And so we, with this, this information I just shared, we want to make sure we're targeting these pioneers or these undecided residents or potential newcomers to Paradise. And so specifically, this budget adjustment request is for $55,000, and this would provide one year of communication services from Blue Flamingo. So this would continue what we have been doing so far and really extend my ability as the public information officer who oversees communications to be able to reach the public in the way that, that they need. We have found that, you know, while this effort was initially grant-funded, it's very difficult to find grant funding for communications-related activity, even with disaster funding. Disaster funding does not see communications as something that is fundable, even though communications is an absolutely vital part of recovery. So it's really unfortunate, and we did look in many directions for funding, but were just unable to, to find any to continue this. And so what would $55,000 go towards in this contract? So again, as I mentioned, this would be a strategic plan to target these pioneers, people who are undecided about rebuilding, giving them that information to make that decision, as well as newcomers, new residents and businesses who may be interested in coming to Paradise and showing that Paradise is a viable place to live and raise your family. We also, this would also provide continued access to an entire staff, so I am just one person, but having Blue Flamingo as a, as a contract gives me access to a whole staff of graphic designers, professional photographers, and content creators that I can call on at any time to help augment what I can do alone. So it's very helpful to have that available. It also would continue the day-to-day operations help that I receive from Blue Flamingo on press releases, press conferences, the social media, surveys, meetings, events that they have helped in the past. So it really is an extension of my ability to do my job, and that's what this contract would, would mean. And so a little bit of information about this contract, as I mentioned, it was initially signed, we hired them in March, the contract was signed in April of 2019. There was an amendment in August of 2020 that extended this contract through March 27th, 2022. And Blue Flamingo is a contractor of the town, which means they take direction from town staff, they take direction from me, and so they are not creating anything on their